So we. We are recording. And we are live.
And I see seven, so wait a second for everyone to kick in. Make sure we don't leave anyone out from my exciting opening remarks. Still see participants clicking in. All right, we'll get started now. Okay, good evening, everyone. And it's seven o'clock. Welcome to the Newbury Report zoning board of appeals meeting for May 25th, 2021 via Zoom. My name is Mark Moore, Vice Chair, calling the meeting to order as our esteemed Chair Rob Chempetti can't be here tonight. As always, we have our city planning director, Andy Port, driving the presentation visuals and managing the participation of attendees. With city planner Kate Sullivan poised in the wings. And before we start, I always want to recognize our note taker Gretchen Joy for her dedicated efforts. I will start with a roll call introduction to ensure that we have proper quorum. As mentioned earlier, I am Mark Moore, Vice Chair, obviously in attendance, and Rob Chempetti, our Chair is absent. Now I'll introduce each member and ask that they respond with here. Secretary Stephen Delisle. Remembering to unmute.
Oh, can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, I am here.
Excellent, not a problem. Member Ken Swanton.
I am here.
Loud and clear. Member Walt Shagnon.
Here.
And Associate Member Gregory Benick.
Present.
All right, we're all present accounted for finding five members present. We have a quorum and can proceed with the meeting with all members when not recused voting. For those who are new to the zoning board of appeals meetings and or new to the Zoom format, we find it helpful to describe how the meeting will flow. With the roll call completed, we will soon move to public hearings. I'll start by reading a description. Of the public notice to identify the application to be presented. I then asked the applicant to present their case for lack of a better word, and it's often the applicant's legal counsel or applicant's architect. That will present and describe the proposed changes to the property. Once the presentation is complete, we then proceed to one of the reasons these meetings are called public hearings. The board will hear public comment, although still virtual. Thanks to the ongoing, hopefully soon to be ending pandemic protocols, the public comment portion of the hearing. entails asking any resident attendee wishing to comment to come forward and be heard. These comments are vital to making the public forum a robust exchange of thoughts and ideas. I ask anyone in virtual attendance who wishes to come forward and be heard to raise their hand electronically utilizing the. Raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Andy Port, or I will announce those that are recognized to speak. Please remember to unmute yourself before you start, as I have occasionally forgotten to do this, and it makes for a very awkward silence. Before starting to comment, we also ask that you clearly provide your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments succinct and to the point so others who wish to comment can do so efficiently. While commenting, feel free to state questions that you may have for the record, but please allow the board to fulfill their role in eliciting additional detail. In the questions from the board portion of the hearing. Thanks for your understanding. We will proceed with public comment until all raised hands are exhausted, and all those who wish to be heard are heard. Once all public comments have been heard, that portion of the hearings closed, and then we'll move on to the aforementioned questions from the board. The board, often inspired by public comments and questions. Will then ask the applicant or the applicant's representatives for any additional detail needed in their decision making process. Once the board has exhausted their questioning, I would close that portion of the hearing and move on to deliberations. The deliberations in the public forum is another cornerstone of this public hearing format. Everything the board discusses about the application is done in public or virtual public. So that all in attendance get to hear the thought process and discussions of each member. And of the board as a whole, as it moves towards a collective decision. During that process, it sometimes becomes evident that the board feels it needs more information. Or that the board is leaning in opposition for one reason or another. The board may then move to continue the application until it can obtain the desired information, or. If a denial of application is looking like a possible outcome, the board often gives the applicant the opportunity to request a continuance to the board to address the board's concerns. At a future date in a future public hearing before deliberation deliberations close and the board proceeds to a formal vote. Which then would have consequences for the applicant with respect to timing and costs. Once deliberations are complete and no continuance has been requested. I will then seek a motion from the board, and when seconded, I will call for a vote on that motion. Because we use Robert's Rules of Order, you will hear a motion on the application made in the affirmative. Or to approve, even if the board member making the motion plans to vote to deny the motion. Four votes in the affirmative in a motion or application is approved. I will then close that application, move on to the next hearing on the agenda, applying all the same rules. When all the applications on the agenda are heard and addressed, that will close a public hearings portion. And the board will engage in its business meeting to approve the minutes from our last meeting and to address any other items appropriate for that forum on the agenda. Okay, I've called the role. We have a quorum. Let's get started with the meeting. To start tonight, the board will first address two requests for continuances from tonight's agenda. The sixty-seven Curzon Mill Road and seven Harbor Street applicants have both asked that their applications be continued to future dates. In order not to have anyone waiting around to comment on an application that they might be unaware is being continued. We like to move first on these items, clearing the deck for the remaining apps. As I will be recusing myself from sixty-five Curzon Mill Road. Secretary Stephen Delisle will share that request, and then I will take back the virtual gavel to preside over seven Harbor Street continuance and the rest of the agenda. With that, the gavel is yours, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. For the matter of sixty-five Curzon Mill Road, we have a request for a continuance. Is the applicant here to speak to that or not?
I believe our expectation was that they would not be here this evening. I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Port. Having no applicant here, I would open it up to members of the board for a motion to approve a continuance.
This is Ken Swanton. I make a motion to continue the variance application for sixty-five Curzon Mill Road. Which is number twenty twenty-one dash oh six. To June, and I'm not quite sure the exact date they requested. Which date did they request?
And this is Andy. If I could ask for a point of clarification, Caitlin, I believe that they asked for the July thirteenth meeting. Is that that's my understanding of their formal request?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so my motion is to June. You say thirteenth?
July thirteenth.
July thirteenth.
July thirteenth. So my motion is until July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swanton. We have a motion before us to continue the variance application for sixty-five Curzon Mill Road to July thirteenth. I will go through the the role. Mr. Swanton.
I think you need a second.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for that.
We have a second.
Bud Shagnon will second.
Thank you, Mr. Shagnon. I apologize for a rookie mistake here. I will now go through the role. Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Bennick.
Yes.
Mr. Channon.
Yes.
And I, Stephen Delisle, say yes, that's four in the affirmative. The motion passes. And with that. I think I will hand back the virtual gavel to Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Well done. We now move on to the second request of continuance, which is. A little farther down the agenda. It's for seven Harbor Street, application twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven special permit for nonconformities. The request to continue is to continue to June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Is the applicant here to comment or? Add to that request.
This is Andy again. I don't believe we were expecting the applicant this evening, and I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Fair enough. With that, I guess then we'll entertain a motion to continue this application.
Mr. Shagnon here. I'll make a motion to continue the application for seven Harbor Street. Special permit for nonconformities to June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Docket twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven.
I'll second that, Stephen Delisle.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the continuance made by Mr. Chagnon, seconded by Mr. Delisle. And we will now go through the vote. Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagnon.
Yes.
Mr. Bennick.
Yes.
Mr. Moore says yes as well. That's all the affirmative. The application is continued to six twenty-two, twenty-one. So with the continuances out of the way, we'll move to our our live public hearings. And the first one tonight, we will hear from. Michael and say Linda Randall, care of Lisa Meade of Me Talaman Costa, fourteen Highland Avenue. Continued from May eleventh. Docket number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, a special permit for nonconformities renovation of an existing single family home. By removing the current second floor and replacing. Some of the second story, and there's been a new plan submitted, I believe, to the board this afternoon. So I'll leave that description as it were, but after some. Some good back and forth with the butters trying to work together. I think we have some something new to look at tonight. And with that, I will ask to hear from the applicant.
Mr. Moore, this is Mr. Delisle. Excuse me just a second, Attorney Meade. I'm going to recuse myself from this matter.
Okay. Mr. Delisle's recused. Okay, now we will continue.
So, Mr. Chair, just for the record, if Mr. Diles can. Is recused, we are at four. Is that correct?
That would be, that would be correct.
Okay, well, we will continue and we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
So my name is Lisa Meade of Me Talaman Costa, and with me this evening is Eileen Graff, who's the architect on the project. And as you noted, we are here on behalf of the applicants who are the purchasers of the property, the Randles. This property is at fourteen Highland Avenue. We can move to the next slide, please. The property and right out front, I do want to say, because I want to acknowledge the chair's comments. I know this board does not like nor should you getting last minute changes, but. In an effort to finally comment, we believe or respond to the comments of all of the neighbors. We did make a change today, and so we will go over the the. The document that you originally received. As the second iteration, and we will also go over the change you received today. It's not a drastic change, but it's an important change. For the neighbors, and it certainly reduces a little bit on the house, and we think it's we think it's all good. So I apologize for that upfront, because I know it's it's not fair to the board, but I think we have all of the information here, and it's not as drastic as. From a design point of view that you can't absorb it in this evening. So thank you. So the structure was built in around nineteen thirty-nine. It's located in the R two zoning district. The setback requirements are twenty-five feet from the front and the rear and ten feet on all sides. The minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet and required frontage is ninety. This lot is nonconforming because it only has six thousand square feet and sixty feet of frontage and has a front yard setback of fourteen point one. Feet on otherwise, the property meets all the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. The applicant. Proposed to originally, as this board originally saw, add one and a half stories on top of the existing. Single story, remove the second stories that exist and add another one and a half stories on top of it. However. Based upon comments from the neighbors as well as the historic commission, the applicant went back and redesigned that plan. And went back to the historic commission. The reason that the applicant is before the historic commission is for a roof line change. And so the historic commission approved the revised document and the revised plans. And that's what we were here for this evening. And so we are here for a special permit for nonconformities. Because of the roof change that impacts an upward extension of the front yard setback. And so that's why we are here before this board this evening for a special permit for nonconformities. You will see in the revised design, as Eileen goes through these, the efforts that have been made. To stay in keeping with the lower Highland Avenue design. And this is really a transition point on Highland Avenue is the structure at sixteen Highland Avenue is significantly different from the structures below. This, the primary structure here at fourteen. And we believe that we have been successful in being complimentary to the lower Highland Avenue. Unique design features in the city of Newport, and I think that's why the historic commission was able to approve this new design. So with that, what I thought I would do is turn it over to Eileen to review what you've had the most time to look at. If you go to the next slide first, so here is the site plan, Chair and members of the board. You will see the structure in the middle and the existing garage. And we are not making any change to the footprint as you see there today. And with that, we'll turn it over to Eileen.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I mean Graff with Graff Architects, and. To help orient you, let's let's use this existing. Exterior elevation drawing. As Lisa mentioned, the building, the original structure was in and around nineteen nineteen thirty-nine. What's happened over the years, as is you can see in this top right drawing is probably the best way to see the evolution of changes. Though I'll call it small, medium, large for simplicity here. The middle section is the original structure, this sort of gable end facing the street, facing Highland. And it had this hip roofed problem, most likely an open, open covered porch. As time has evolved, that French porch got closed in. Dormers were added to the original section. And then on the west northwest side, and then on the rear of the property, you can see the taller piece of an addition that is two stories. They use the same pitch as before, but. There are some, you see some dash lines in that top right drawing, that's trying to represent where the floor systems are between the two floors, and. As you can see, they don't quite align on that upper level. At the bottom left is the rear view of that two-story section, and then the bottom right is the northwestern side or southwestern side. Of the property, and there you could see the dormers that were added at a at at some point of its evolution, a little large, large in scale for that type of cottage. And and as well, you could see this extended chimney that also seems sort of out of proportion in length. So that's the existing conditions that we were confronted with, and. As we saw it, there were design challenges to to. Update this house to make it more unified, you know, both aesthetically from that exterior, trying to join these forms, so it felt. Cohesive and likewise from the interior, as I had just mentioned about that rear part and the floor systems. It's rather. It's rather squeezed in the in the original part of the house under that. Roof, you could see on the top left drawing some dash lines and the very top dash line represents this. The highest point of a ceiling in that area, which is six feet. And as you extend towards the left to the lower side of that dormer. That goes down to about five feet, so that hopefully will try to give you some representation of scale. It's pretty squeezed in that front original area. And then you have to do some steps to get down to the rear addition. So so it's currently quite. Disjunctive as far as a floor plan on the second on the second level. So again, trying to bring some cohesiveness to to let this be a sort of. Better working two-story structure or two-level structure. Because ultimately, in the end, we are proposing a one and a half story structure. So then, and then the other thing is, as design goals, is to bring this building into in into context to the neighborhood, you know, as. As mentioned, Highland has some significant. Architectural period structures of the bungalows along along the right side of the street as you head up and. And so we wanted to be in keeping with that feel so that it can. Feel of the same of the same era, but not replicate completely. And so with that, we can go to the next slide. So here is the design as we came up with, and what we were hoping to do with this is. Change the roof of the original structure and on the back and and make it. More unified with one broad gable. The top left drawing is the elevation that faces the street. But the top right drawing is the view as you go down the the right side of the driveway, and this best. Demonstrates this broad gable. And if you look to the left of that drawing, you could see the front cover porch now is is sort of integrated. We want to bring back detail, architectural detail that's that it starts to show. What could have been also the evolution of a of a bungalow at some point, demonstrating some columns and then half walls and shingle. And bringing back the and filling it with the cottage style windows. Then, as you go further back, you can see this broad gable stretching all the way to the back end of the structure. And within it, these two shed dormers towards the front. Is goes all the way to the ridge, but then what the one on the back is actually stepped down low, trying to keep its profile a little. Smaller in scale. This back dormer, the shed dormer also has a step in its location, and that's best seen on the. Bottom left drawing where we've pushed the plane of that cheek wall of the dormer. Inbound away from the driveway side by a foot. Just again, to try to sort of alleviate some of the the massing and on that side of the structure. This, the the top right drawing, you will see that second story addition over the porch of over the deck, excuse me. And that is the piece that. Is has been removed, and those are the the in the drawings submitted earlier. And we I will show you these in a in a subsequent drawing, but I just want to point out that that's the piece that has been removed. But otherwise, I'll keep talking through the design and that the that deck will stay as as it exists today. And then the next slide. So some of the this drawing was created because some of the concerns of the of the neighbors, as well as historic had questions about scale and. What we we created this drawing to help convey how the new structure and the new roof lines relate to the existing structure. So the red dash lines of the existing structure, and as you can see, say, on that top right drawing. There are some areas that actually are are lower than the existing, say, back rear part of the structure. And then some saving the broad gable are a hair taller than the ridge line of the original structure. So it's. It has, it balances out, but more or less the ridge line of the new is just shy of the existing. Ridge line in height, and then, of course, we remove that chimney, but but more or less keeping in the exact same. Ridge line again, as proposed as as exists, and you could see on that bottom right drawing that extension. Again, the second story extension that is no longer, so that would be removed, and you would see the shed door were. Just the same as it is on the driveway side, which is the top right draw. And the next slide. In this drawing, we tried to represent how this proposed front elevation and scale of this structure. Will relate to its context. So on the right, you see the budding twelve Highland and its front elevation. And then the left is sixteen Highland. They are spaced, you know, based off of the survey and its footprints. So that gives represents. Accurate. Scale to the spacing of them. That that street does have some elevation change, so sixteen Highland being on the high side, so you have some range in. In that as well. And then if you go to the next slide. Similarly, as that last drawing, try to represent what exists today and how the new roof lines would relate. To the to what it what is there today. And then the next slide. Here's the existing. You could start to see the easiest thing to point out is on the second floor, those two shed dormers that are off the original section, just for reference. But otherwise. Floor plant footprint stays the same as what's existing here. And the next slide. And here's the proposed. Again, pointing out the area that we are removing it, which is that back. Office space on the middle drawing, which is the second floor, so that piece will be removed again. Reiterating that the footprint does not change from the existing. And the next slide. So here are some photographs to give some context in in the existing structure. Again, the brick house is twelve Highland and the uphill side is sixteen Highland as we're climbing up Highland Ave, heading towards the hospital. And the next slide. Little further down, you could start to see the scale change that happens right at this point, too, from the one and a half story bungalows to the yellow. Structure is two and a half story. And next slide. Now viewing it from the opposite direction, coming down the hill. Next slide. And these are directly across the street, so these have over time have changed and evolved to become. You know, reproduction colonials there, but giving it. A difference in scale on the street as well of two and a half stories. And the next slide. Here is the structure in perspective. Again, trying to give some materiality to what's what the new structure will be. It has a combination of shingles. And a cottage style windows with clavage. Primarily on the on the main body of the of the gable ends. Next slide. And then another perspective from the other direction. Also showing similarly this broad gable. That roof that you see coming off the rear, again, that's the piece that we're removing, so you will see a sloped shed dormer, much like you see the on the front side. But the rear one sits lower than the front. And I just want to finish with the what I what I didn't touch on was the square footage. Ultimately. With with these changes, we're only adding a hundred and eleven square feet from what currently exists. And we feel that with this one and a half story. Renovation and change in roof lines, we feel that we have kept in 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 the same scale as the neighborhood and likewise. Picked up on the architectural feel of the of of the neighborhood. It is not quite the same or replicating the ones that are down below. As the proportions of this structure are a little different as well. This is a little narrower than the typical ones down lower, so. This one is a little more unique, but yet gives a nod to the period that surrounds it. So with that, I will pass the presentation back to Lisa, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the board. May have.
So thank you, Eileen. And if you go to the next slide, and I think we're just in the next slide, please. So here is the proposal that you got today. So here's the site plan, and you'll see that it's exactly like the existing conditions. Nothing has changed. Every single thing is the same on the site plan as it is today, and that's because we took off that addition. Over the deck in the rear, so that no longer counts against lot coverage. And next slide, please. And so here is the proposal, as Eileen was saying, you can see in the rear and the bottom left-hand. Design that there is no addition over the. Deck in the rear, and similarly, you can see that on the right-hand side as well. So it all stays within the existing covered footprint of the house, not covering up that rear deck, and therefore there's no change on lot coverage. And the next slide, please. And here is the floor plan. And here is the floor plan, absent the addition on the rear. And so to be clear, the applicant is requesting that you approve, the board would approve if it was so inclined, these final set of plans that has just been presented to you, slide 18, 19 and 20 as the final design that we are presenting this evening. And so with that, I would like to go through the criteria under section nine, three B. So we, you know, as Eileen suggested, the design reflects and is similar to either of the designs, but we're going to focus on the design that you received today, similar to the rest of the neighborhood. And it was approved by the Historic Commission, not the specific design, but without the addition over the rear at their April 22 meeting. Neither proposal adds any new nonconformities and only intensifies the front setback nonconformity. If you could go to the next slide, please. So we believe the board then can find that the proposal is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. The existing home has been severely modified over the past number of years. Well, at one time, the home may have been a cottage or similar style as Eileen described. That style is long ago lost when the addition was constructed on the rear and those dormers were put on the western side of the structure. Later, in order to add some headroom, those dormers were added, but was not very successful in that. And not notwithstanding that addition, the second floor continues to have a head height of less than or just six feet down the middle of it. As you can see, the the new design at the of the applicants are keeping with the design and the feel of the lower Highland Avenue neighborhood on the right hand side or the northern side. And then at 12, 14 and 16, there's a transition 12 retains those cottage styles as existing or bungalow styles is existing on Lower Highland. This product, this site was essentially the transition, given the additions that were added. And certainly, 16 Highland Avenue, which is a two and a half story house, a much different style immediately adjacent to the west of the property. And again, similarly, the houses on the opposite side of Highland Avenue have been have varying changes in architecture, not similar at all to the cottages on the right hand side of Highland Avenue as you travel up. With that, we believe that the board can find that the proposed structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming structure. We've, as Eileen said, there's only 111 square feet of increased living space over existing conditions. We've removed the extension over the deck. The actual floor plan itself doesn't change now or the or the the footprint doesn't change. The height does not exceed the current height of the home and the open space and lot coverage remains the same and the setbacks all remain the same. I'm going to stop here. I have some more slides, but they go to another issue. I don't know if they'll be necessary or not, so we'll stop with that. And we'd ask the board to respectfully approve the special permit for nonconformities as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Mead, and thank you, Ms. Graff, for the presentation. At this time, I'm going to look to hear public comments. So again, as I, as I mentioned in the opening salvo, if anyone wants to to make a comment on this application, please electronically raise your hand. Wait to be recognized, unmute yourself and please give your name and address clearly for the record.
Chair, the first person we have is Stacy McMillan.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. McMillan.
Hi, this is Stacy McMillan at 16 Highland Avenue. And so I just want to just to be 100% clear. It sounds like we're we're now being presented with slides 18, 19 and 20. And 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 with those slides, we do really appreciate the removal of the addition, the rear addition. You'll know from our letter that we felt that presented significant problems, both with detriment to the neighborhood as as well as lot coverage. So we really appreciate that. And I had a couple of comments, I suppose, just more generally about the process here. I would say, having gone through this over the better part of the last two months, and my sort of takeaway was that as a neighbor, it sort of feels like you need to be either a property lawyer, an architect or an engineer to actually understand what's going on. And and so I guess I would just maybe request that the planning department perhaps think about what's required of an applicant and think about it from the perspective of the neighboring properties and the abutters who will not have the expertise that the planning board and the members of the zoning board and, you know, the architects or lawyers for the applicants would have. So, for example, and where you saw the overlay of the proposed structure against the existing structure in slides six and eight here, I think that's super helpful and would be something that would be really valuable to require of any application. And similarly, in a case like this, where up until that addition was removed, the the lot coverage was very, very close to the maximum of 25%. I think it would be really helpful to require the actual dimensions that are being used because we couldn't actually calculate that accurately ourselves. And so I just I just would maybe ask if things like that could be taken into consideration in the future and so that, you know, members of the neighborhood can feel like they really understand what's being presented and and can then sort of respond appropriately and to those plans. So that's, I suppose, that's all I wanted to say. We obviously submitted a letter that was with respect to the plans without that addition removed. And I noted that in the presentation just now, there was reference to either plan. I guess I would just want to be 100% sure that when the zoning board comes to make their decision tonight, that decision is based on slides 18, 19 and 20 only. If for some reason it refers to either plan, we definitely still oppose the plans prior to removal of that rear extension. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. McMillan.
Chair, I do not see another hands raised at this time.
All right, we'll give it a second here.
We do have another Wade Amos.
Hello, Wade Amos, Six Island Ave. Thank you for the board and the chair for the public hearing. I did want to thank the applicant for making the changes that were proposed. And again, following up on what was said previously, I want to make sure that when the board makes their decision that they are basing it upon the plans without the addition on the back, because that slide that said approval of either plan was kind of confusing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Amos. Would anyone else like to comment?
And the next person we have is Jake. I hope I'm not mispronouncing the last name, Bartabedian.
Hi, this is Erica Bartabedian and I, Jake and I live at 12 Highland Ave. So basically, just wanted to piggyback on to what Stacy had commented on and Wade as well, just clarifying that that confusion on slide 21 makes us a little uneasy about what is actually being considered. So would like some clarification on that. I also just want to make a note publicly that the Historical Commission did deem the house 14 Highland Ave historically significant as it fit into a neighborhood of other historically significant homes. And I think that that's important to keep in in the record. And and I also felt like this process was very difficult to to go through. I mean, the first set of plans were not very clear to understand. They, the architect came back with some really helpful information at that second meeting. And this time, there were some other confusing elements. So it would be important, I think, in this process going forward for all neighbors and all neighborhoods in Newburyport to be able to really participate in the process. So it needs to be a little bit easier to work with because not everybody is going to come to the table with a lawyer. So thank you for your time and we appreciate you considering our concerns.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bartabedian. Anyone else have a raised hand? Mr. Port.
Chair, I believe that's the last hand raised.
Okay. Excellent. All solid comments. And I will close that portion of the meeting and move on to questions from the board. I believe we know when Mr. Delisle has recused himself from this. So, Mr. Swanton. Floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I guess the first question, based on what several of the people just said in the hearing, I I think it's pretty clear the way I heard it, but I just want to make sure here that what were is in front of us tonight for final approval is the slides that show the final plan here without the addition up over the back deck. Is is that correct?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
You may.
That is absolutely correct. So it would be this slide that's dated May 24th. The footprint that's the slide after 20 and then 18, not the footprint, but the floor plans that are on slide 20 and then 18 would be the site plan that would be approved. And I that date is also. I can't see a revised date on there. Andy, if you can see that, May 24th. So all the plans are dated May 24th.
Okay, so that I think addresses what several of the abutters had asked that we make absolutely sure. So I'm glad you've confirmed that is the case. The next thing is I just want to double check on the historic commission. The historic commission reviewed this plan, actually, the previous plan, the one with the building over the the office over the deck. But anyway, they they reviewed this and they have a because they're an advisory essentially here, they have approved it. Just I'm just double checking. Is that correct?
That that's correct. So in this instance, actually, Mr. Swanton, they're not actually an advisory board. They actually have authority here to hold a plan. So they've reviewed it for they reviewed it for a roofline change and they're for demolition delay. And so they approved the roof. They did deem it historically significant for the reasons Ms. Bartabedian stated. But then they released it from delay approving the plans.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. That's very helpful. My final question has to do with this thing that would never really came up, which is, I hate to even bring it up, but I don't think it's that material anyway, which I guess there's some some private matter here as a discussion as to where exactly the boundary line is between this house and its neighbor to the right. But it would appear to me that even if you went with with either opinion, you'd still have plenty of side lot side lot area there. So it's kind of doesn't really affect the what we're looking at. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, Mr. Swanton, you're absolutely correct. So where there's a private property line dispute and it's in front of a planning board or zoning board, if the dispute does not go to the heart of the matter, then the planning board or zoning board cannot make a determination related to the property line dispute. And as you so aptly noted, in this instance, and we that's why we provided that extra plan, it neither affects or puts out of whack, if you will, the lot coverage or the sideline setback. The application still meets both of those things.
Okay. And finally, I was going to ask you about massing, but in walking around that neighborhood, there's quite a few houses, as you pointed out, that have already grown to larger than this. So I wasn't really going to ask a massing question. So I thought your presentation was very complete. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chagman.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I I just had a couple of things that probably just confirmations, but using that site plan that we were just looking at and reviewing the dimensional controls, it looks like the only difference between the existing home and the proposed revision is the roof height goes from 22.8 to 23.2. Everything else stays the same. And can we confirm that that's correct?
That is correct.
And and the only reason you're before us is we have a nonconformity of the front roof that is being extended upward.
Correct.
But those are all my questions, Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bennet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two quick questions. First, I heard the square footage increases 111 feet. Can you tell me roughly what that number is as it relates to the current square footage of the house?
If you go to the floor plan. So the is this the proposed? So the proposed floor plan says it's 1,877. So you would minus 111, so it's 1,766.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. And I think that's the only question I had. So thank you very much. It was a comprehensive presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I think my fellow board members have asked any question and clarified anything that anything that I would have to I had a question on, so I'm going to have no further questions. And we're going to move on to deliberations. And remember, in deliberations, we need to be aware of to frame our discussions around the conditions needed for approving a special permit for nonconforming. And with that said, let's start with Mr. Swan.
Thank you. Yeah, I I see no new nonconformities created with this proposal. I applaud the applicant for working with the neighbors to figure out something that will get garner their support, particularly this removal of the office at the end. I don't think it is more detrimental to the neighborhood. And so I can support this special permit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chagman.
I have to agree with Mr. Swan and kudos to the applicant, the presentation and the design by Graff Architects. A nice looking bungalow style improvement. I can support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bennet.
I would agree, the project certainly meets the requirements required for a special permit for nonconformities. The design is tasteful, sensitive to the neighborhood structures and to the concerns of the neighbors equally as important. Seems to integrate well with the neighborhood in terms of scale and massing and certainly is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than any than the preexisting nonconforming structure that we have on the site now. In fact, in my view, it's a marked improvement, so I can support this and do so.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And well said all, and I don't feel the need to add anything if everyone's hit on all the the strong points of this revised presentation collaboration, as you will, and I can support it. So at this time, I will close deliberations and be looking for a motion. But keeping in mind that in a staff report, we were advised to beware of the tree and sidewalk standards. So let's maybe consider the project may trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance. We don't have final construction costs, I believe, so any motion should include a reference to any of the applicable provisions regarding tree and sidewalk.
This is Ken Swanson. I'll make that motion. I make a motion to approve the special permit for nonconformities application for 14 Highland Avenue, file number 2021-15, with the standard condition that the applicant shall be responsible for compliance with the applicable provisions of section 2B46A XH6Q and XH7B10 of the Newburyport zoning ordinance. And that does, in fact, refer to what you just mentioned on the sidewalk, trees and sidewalk.
So we have a motion and looking for a second.
I will second that, Mr. Bennet, here.
Okay, we have a motion to approve seconded by Mr. Bennet. And we now go to a vote. Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagman.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Moore, yes. That's for the affirmative. Application is approved. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on our agenda is 192 Low Street, application 2021-24 special permit for nonconformities to demolish a preexisting nonconforming structure and replace with a new single family home. to demolish a preexisting nonconforming structure and replace with a new single family home. Would, might we hear from the applicant right now?
Yep, this is Ben Legary. I'm here to present. I'm here with Nick Cracknell, but I'm going to do most of the presenting.
You have the floor.
Okay, so I got a slideshow. Okay, Andy, looks like you have that. I have a slide. Can I share my screen or Andy, I send you?
Ben, when did you send that?
It was last minute. I thought I was going to share mine, but I noticed you were sharing. So I just emailed you like while the last presentation was going on.
Yeah, okay. I will pull that up. I just want to make it clear for the record. I think we probably have discussed this with Caitlin Sullivan before, but we expect presentations prior to the, you know,
Okay.
before the meeting.
Yeah.
While we wait, that's come up twice tonight. We'll have to
Yeah.
We'll have to get a big ruler now.
Yeah, I went to a different town recently and I had to share it myself. And then Nick texted me and said, you should send it in.
Yeah, that makes sense. Rules are different.
Cool. All right. So we're here for, to present a special permit for nonconformities. It's a nonconforming lot due to frontage. It's in the R2 district, which is requires 90 feet of frontage. We have 79.76, so just under 80 feet. But the lot does meet all other requirements in terms of size of the lot. So we're going for an alteration or extension for a lot frontage and we're going for a size increase over 500 square foot increase of the home, which is currently 992 square feet. You can go to the next slide. So the design team on this, well, obviously on the applicant, I've been working on it with Nick Cracknell. He's my consultant from Keystone Planning and Design. Everett Chandler is the surveyor from Winter Street GEC. JWR Design Incorporated is a plan architect where we got the plans and William Nolan from Savoy Nolan Architects is going to be the design, architecture and structural architect. So you can go to the next slide. So these are the existing elevations of the house. You can see it's a lot like a lot of stuff on Low Street. It exists at 992 square feet. And which actually you'll see on further slides, I did some shuffling that it's about 1,000 square feet less than the surrounding of Bunning Home. So it is a little bit low for the area that it's in. But you can go to the next slide. So these are some pictures of the house. You know, it's a ranch that does have a concrete structure addition. So the garage and that little addition room to the left of the garage is all made of concrete block. It's a little bit weird of construction. You'll see to the right that the house is actually on blocks. It doesn't have a foundation. It kind of took me a minute to figure out, but it's on blocks with steel beams spanning the blocks. And then it's just a dirt floor underneath. So it's completely open to the elements, which it's not a well-built home, I guess, when we run through the other slides. You can go to the next one. The interior is completely collapsing. These are pictures of the left, the floor rot. The back door is literally just hanging off. Since there is no foundation and it's a dirt ground, there's actually no rat slab or any vapor barrier. It's completely destroyed, the floorboards on the first floor. And then the next two slides are just a couple of locations of roof collapse. So yeah. Yeah, you can go to the next one, actually. So this is what we're looking to replace it with. It's a house that, you know, my clients, actually, we're doing this for friends. This is not going to be a spec house or a build. I'm actually helping out. Nick and me are helping out good friends of mine of 20 years and they're building this for their family home. So we found this plan. We love. It's a 2,057 square foot house and with, above the garage does have some storage space, 336 square feet. It's a craftsman style house that it's about, it's one and a half stories in most locations. So it seems to not be dominating over the neighboring houses, which seems to be found in the neighborhood. You can go to the next slide. So this is a location on Low Street. This kind of shows the neighborhood surrounding homes sizes. So across the street, there have been a couple renovations where the one at the bottom, 2,464 square feet was a ranch like this one that went up a second floor about a year or two ago. The one to the north of that, it's 2248 square feet, had a substantial addition, drive under garage done to it. And our two Butters on either side of us is 1,880 and 1,421, which is on the smaller side, but the ones to the left does have a story and a half. At the bottom of the screen to the right, you'll see that's the new construction house that's being built at 186 Low Street, I believe. And that one happens to be 2,000 square feet. So very, very similar in size. Go to the next one. So this is neighborhood construction. So these are all houses that are either under construction, being built, planned, or have recently been built. So Three Murphy Ave is one that actually came on a couple of weeks ago, which is going in around the corner. It's about two, three houses away, 2,600 square feet. 186 Low Street is three doors down to the right on Low Street. That's a 2,000 square foot house under agreement, should be finishing soon. On the bottom left, 195 Low Street is directly across the street from this house, which is about 24 and change, 2,400 square feet and change. And that was a ranch that actually got raised up into a colonial size. And then the one on the bottom right is on the corner of Low Street and North Atkinson, which I believe is 2,000 square feet, could be like 1,900, but it's right around the same area, just showing massing and size of the neighborhood of everything kind of that's being built. You can go to the next slide. So this is a site plan that shows the existing house that's hashed in. You can see the ranch underneath. It is nonconforming, I believe, on both sides. So what we decided to do is pull the house in. We didn't really hold any of the nonconforming setbacks. We have all the setbacks conform now. So we reduced those nonconformities. We're within the height limit. And then the driveway that exists now is actually a very skinny single lane, which is pretty, you have to shuffle cars to get out. So if you have two cars at the house, every time someone leaves, that's two cars going out on the low street. So we did widen it so that each car can get out individually and there won't, it won't double the impact on Low Street. So this plan reduces nonconformities. We meet all the dimensional standards. We maintain the street setback with the neighbors. So we we wanted to set the house at the same front setback to keep that streetscape. And then we remove the driveway. So you can go to the next slide. So this is the zoning matrix. You can see it's in the R2 zoning that requires 10,000 square feet. We have 10,848. So we're just over that. Requires 90 feet of frontage. We have 79.76, but obviously won't be increasing that nonconformity. The height limit's 35 in the area. Right now, it's short at 13.8. We're going to end up at 20, 28.5, still substantially below. Max lot coverage is 25. Right now, it's 12.7 and we're only going up to 17.6. The minimum open space is 40%. And we currently, it's 83.9. We're still going to have 70, almost still almost double. The primary front setback is 25. The existing is 35 and we're actually making it better. We're at 35.3. And then side setback A on the, I believe that's the left side. No, right side is 10. Right now, it's 4.9 and we're going to keep it at, we're going to meet the 10-foot side setback. Side setback B is 10, requires 10 feet. It has 9.7 right now. We're going to go to 16.8. So we're going to be off on that. You know, well within. The rear setback, we don't think we have any problems. 25. Right now, it's 74.4. We're going to be at 57.5, still double. Parking spaces, it's required as two. Right now, it is two, but it's tandem. That's where the shuffling is a little bit problem. And now we're going to have two plus. We'll have two car garage and plenty of, you know, space in between. And FAR, there is none. So you can go to the next one. So the Low Street findings. So we found that single family uses are permitted in the R2 zoning district. Their requested use is existing and desirable for this zoning district. The proposed use is existing and the wider driveway will improve pedestrian safety. Their requested use is existing and will not overburden existing municipal infrastructure or harm general health, safety, welfare, the city surrounding in the neighborhood. There are no special regulations in the table if your use is a single family structure. The proposed single family structure will not impair or adversely impact the quality or character of the surrounding neighborhood. The request, the requested use is existing and will not be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed single family structure is in harmony with character with the scale and massing of the surrounding neighborhood. And we believe the proposed single family structure will not cause any adverse environmental or hazardous impact. I believe that might be it. So we're, you know, to finish off, we believe that how new house does not create any new nonconformities that aren't there. We actually do solve a lot of nonconformities with the structure. We believe the house design is consistent with the quality and character of the neighborhood, and we're hoping that the board can support our application to replace this home.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Legare. At this time, if there's no further presentation, we'll move on to public comment. So again, be looking to use the raise hand icon if someone in virtual attendance, which is to make a comment on this application, please raise your hand now and be recognized.
And Chair, the first person we have is Alexandria Kelly. Alexandria, it's not clear if your microphone is working from our end. If you are having any issues, there is a call and number you can try. You've had that issue happen once with someone.
Let me try it out. Good evening.
Oh, there we go. I hear it.
Excellent. Great. So good evening. My name is Alexandria Kelly. Thank you very much. I live at 194 Low Street. I know we did enter a letter. I want to state for the record that we do not object to the proposed plan for the new home. We do, however, preserve the right to evaluate the property border condition upon completion of our own survey. And we're happy to have some new neighbors and a very nice designed home next to us. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Any other? Anyone else wishing to comment?
Not seeing any other hands, Chair.
Give it a second or two. It worked last time. Again, the raise hand icon, if you wish to be heard. Going once. Going twice. No one?
No.
All right. We will close public comment and move on to questions from the board. Welcoming back, Mr. Delisle. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Legare, just a couple of quick questions for you. First, could you just speak a little bit about the materials that will be used on the exterior, the windows and the siding and whatnot? If you could just speak to that.
Yep. I believe right now the plan is to stick with kind of what's been going on in the neighborhood. I mean, I would assume probably hardy board. You know, windows, simulated divided light windows, that type of thing. I mean, we're definitely, obviously, there's a trend in new report. We got to stick to the quality of finishes to, you know, make it worth it. So yeah, I believe right now it's hardy board and true simulated divided light windows.
Okay, thank you. And the, just the design elements, you have sort of the horizontal boards on the first floor and then the vertical boards.
Yeah.
Vertical board look on the second floor. Is that, am I seeing that right?
Yeah, yep. So it's kind of the Craftsman. Yeah, it's clapboards on the first floor, board of battening on the second floor, and there's a little bit of shingle in the peak.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton?
Actually, I really don't have any questions.
Okay, we will move on. Mr. Chagman?
Yes, I just have a couple. It appeared from the footprint, the existing home, you won't be reusing the foundation. Can you, can you confirm that? Are you actually just removing the entire foundation or?
There actually is not a foundation. I went under there today and I was trying to figure out what was going on. And I believe it's some sort of block system. It's just dirt under there. And from what I can see, it's some sort of blocks with like steel beams spanning it. And then the floor joists sit on those steel beams. It's actually one of the first houses I've seen constructed that way. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Understood. I guess I was assuming that when you were talking about that before, it was the addition only, but you're saying the main home is not sitting on a concrete foundation.
No, the main home is almost worse. I mean, the addition's made out of block, which is good, although I mean, everything's just bad. I mean, I walked in today and the face of all the brick on the fireplace just fell over on the ground. It's kind of one of those houses. There's no drywall. Everything's kind of, it's just, yeah. But the entire main portion of the home was built on these like temporary block kind of piling foundations. It's very awkward. So yeah, we'll be removing the entire thing.
Got it. And I guess the second thing, and maybe it's just confirmation from your presentation, which was very good, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like you've fixed a lot of dimensional controls of the existing structure where you've pulled some of the side setbacks.
We purposely, their first one, actually, we were going to hold some of the, you know, preexisting, but I actually, we rounded back to the engineer and said, why don't we just pull everything back in within the setbacks?
And congratulations for doing that. Thank you. And I guess the last thing, the real reason you're here is just because you're going for a 500-foot larger than a 500 square foot increase. What today is a very, very small home. And I would just comment that the design is a modest home. You know, it's not a 3,000 square foot McMansion. So
Yeah.
Kudos.
Yeah. And I don't know if you guys picked up, but I did, I did an average of the two houses size to side and the two across the street. And the average of those four homes came out to, I think it was 2,003 square feet, and we're going with 2,057. So we are, we believe we're, we tried to stay very modest in line with everything surrounding us.
Great. Thank you. No other questions, Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chagman. Mr. Bennet?
I have no questions.
Excellent. And I will, I'll pile on with the same comment. No questions. Excellent questions from, from my colleagues. So we'll close questions from the board and move on to deliberations. Again, with the same instructions that we're all familiar with, but our deliberations should be shaped around special permit requirements, discussions of what's required to grant that. And we'll start out with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the criteria for special permit for nonconformities, appears that there'll be no additional nonconformity here or a new nonconformity with this proposed design. And it also appears to me that the changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it'll be a benefit to the neighborhood. So I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swan?
I concur with what my colleague, Mr. Delisle, said. I also really appreciate you addressing both the nonconforming left and right setbacks, getting them to 10 feet. That's very, very nice. Also appreciate you doing the analysis of the existing homes in the immediate vicinity, showing that there's really not a massing issue here. That's something that does concern us sometimes. The only issue I have is in the future, please get us presentations in advance, because we do look at these things in advance. But having said that, I can support this application.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chagman?
I have to agree with the previous comments. And again, great presentation, nice design, nice modest home. No new nonconformities. And again, kudos for restoring some of those setbacks. And obviously, this should not be a detriment to the neighborhood. I do think it's a very huge improvement over the existing home that's there, especially when looking at that very fancy flat roof garage. So I can support the application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chagman. Mr. Bennet?
This is a dramatic improvement to the neighborhood without a shadow of a doubt. The application comfortably meets all the requirements necessary to support the application for special permit for nonconformities. It improves the dimensional controls that in many respects and reduces the existing nonconformity. It's consistent, the size is consistent with homes in the neighborhood. And in every respect, is a positive contribution to the community. So I can support this.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And for me, for all the reasons my colleagues have already stated eloquently, I can, I can agree to support this proposal. Very modest, great improvement, improved. The structure is going to be fully conforming. So it's all good. So I can certainly support it. And we'll close deliberations at this time and be looking for a motion. Again, we do have the tree and sidewalk ordinance provision that probably should be mentioned in any motion. And I'll leave it at that.
Greg Bennet here. I will move to approve the special permit for nonconformities application for 192 Low Street, file number 2021-24, with the standard conditions that the applicant shall be responsible for compliance with the sidewalks and street, street trees provisions of the zoning ordinance.
Very good.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
We have a motion made by Mr. Bennet, seconded by Mr. Swanton to approve with conditions. File number 2021-24, and we now go to a vote. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagno.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Moore. Yes, that's all in the affirmative. Application is approved.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Legere.
Thank you.
So our next item on the agenda tonight is Patty Ann Bampos, Carol Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman Costa for 2 Neptune Street. It's 2021-25 in appeal, the zoning administrator's determination that addition of a dormer on pre-existing non-conforming structure requires special permit for non-conformities. At this time, can we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr.
Appeal or a ballot, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman Costa, on behalf of the applicant Patty Ann Bampos for the property at 2 Neptune Street, as you stated. And as you stated, the applicant is proposing to put a dorm, which you'll see in a little while, on the salt box side, so to speak, of the house or the western side of the house. By way of background, the applicant received, went to the Historic Commission just about a year ago and for demolition delay for a roofline change. The house was deemed historically significant, and we'll go into that in a minute. And then they imposed the delay to the point of Mr. Swanton earlier this evening. So they impose the delay for a year, which is the demolition delay in the City of Newport, which says that if you have a historically significant structure and the Historic Commission is so inclined or they don't approve your design, they may impose a delay. So they did that and the applicant has been waiting. And so the applicant wanted to pull a building permit because the delay expires in August. And so a request was made for determination that no building permit was required to construct this dormer. And the zoning code enforcement officer indicated that she believed that, in fact, that the dormer did intensify prior non-conformities and that a special permit was required. We believe that that is inappropriate under the existing law in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Starting with the case of Bjorkland versus the Board of Appeals Norwell in 2008, repeated that case was repeated in the Mass Massachusetts Appeals Court in 2012, and the case of Shepherd versus the zoning board of appeals. Again, Sharla Russe versus Fiara out of the Land Court, repeated the same finding relative to these type of additions in the Land Court in 2012. And just last year in Comstock versus the City of Gloucester in 2020, the appeals court again cited the legal determination of the Bjorkland case that dormers do not by law intensify pre-existing non-conformities, and we'll review that in a moment. So if you go to the next slide, so this property is at the corner of Neptune and Water Street. And the addition, the house was built in 1657. And there's a proposal to put a dormer on the rear roof of the non-conforming home. It increases the living area on the second floor by 140 square feet. It's non-conforming for lot area, frontage, front yard setback, left side yard setback, rear yard setback in lot coverage. And there are no new non-conformities and the shed dormer will be fully encompassed within the existing dimensions. If you could go to the next slide, please. So as you can see from this zoning table, there are no changes to any aspect of the dimensional requirements of the zoning table and the zoning dimensional requirements for the city. If you could go to the next slide, please. So in accordance with section 9B of the ordinance, alterations to pre-existing non-conforming structures are allowed by right so long as there are no intensifications of those structures. If the applicant were to add more than 500 square feet, there would be a requirement to get a special permit. The applicant is not doing that. If there was an intensification for any of the setbacks, gap, it would be required to get a special permit. The application, the applicant is not doing that. In the case of Bjorkland versus the zoning board of appeals Norwell, Kate, the court specifically found that concerns over making of small scale alterations, extensions or structural changes to a pre-existing house are illusory. Examples of such improvements could include the addition of a dormer. Because their small scale nature, the improvements mentioned could not reasonably be found to increase a non-conforming nature of a structure. We conclude as a matter of law that they would not constitute intensifications. Now, I'm going to go through that in a moment, given the comments from the city solicitor. Because in the Bjorkland case, you had a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And there was going to be a house built upon the lot that there was a question about the new house becoming requiring a special permit because of the non-conforming lot, even though the dimensions and setbacks would be met. So that particular part of the case doesn't apply. However, this finding the court does apply in the cases that I cited. Particularly the most recent case, the Comstock case, is actually a case on point with the case at hand. So in this instance, the proposed dormer does not increase the height of the structure as it's located within the existing roof and within the existing ridge line of the roof. If you go to the next slide, please. The staff notes that you received incorrectly defined dormer, which is actually defined within the City of Newport Code of Ordinances under building demolition. The staff comments refer to the guidelines of dormers. Which if an applicant were to meet the guidelines for dormers, which by the way, is from the City of Cambridge, then an applicant does not need to go for demolition review to the Historic Commission. It's not a definition of dormer. It's a guideline on how your dormers could be constructed. The actual definition of dormer in the City of Newport ordinances is as follows. A rooftop appearance is distinguished from a vertical addition to a building or structure built out from a sloping roof and not extending above the ridge line of the roof from which it projects, set back from all of the walls of the building or structure below it and containing one or more windows, all of which apply to the proposed dormer. That is the definition of dormer in the ordinance. It's true that this dormer does not meet the guidelines for dormers because if it did, the applicant would not have needed to go to the Historic Commission. But that is not how we define dormers in the City of Newport. It's actually defined as a definition in the Code of Ordinances. Next slide, please. So the city solicitor relies on what we believe is outdated and inapplicable case law. In the case of Goldhurst, the there, the applicants were going to add a second story. This is a 1992 case. The applicants were going to add a second story to the house. And the argument was that that didn't intensify a non-conform, pre-existing non-conforming setback because it didn't expand the footprint. They didn't consider whether or not it applied to dormers. The court ultimately did not rule determinatively on the issue, but remanded it back to the zoning board. But we don't disagree that if we were adding an entire second story, that that would certainly intensify the sideline setbacks or front yard setback or rear yard setback of a non-conforming structure because you're adding vertical additions up. That's not what's happened here. 16 years after Goldhurst, the appeals court decided Bjorkland and decided that dormers were de minimis changes. And as late as last or as recent as last August, the appeals court in the Comstock case reiterated the principle from Bjorkland that the addition of a dormer is a specific de minimis change that does not increase existing non-conformities. Now, interestingly, in the Comstock case, this applied to a garage which was in the sideline setback. In the City of Gloucester, they actually have a provision in their zoning ordinance that says garages to single and two-family homes would be considered a singular two-family home. And so it was given the same treatment under the second except clause of 48, section six. And so this garage actually had a roof where the gable end went from from the side to side. And the proposal was to turn the gable end and go from back to front and increase the height and actually increase slightly the this, the the overhang, the eaves into the setback. And it was only going to be less than three feet from the sideline. And in the purpose of the case in the Gloucester matter was that whether or not it actually needed a variance versus a special permit. Because the City of Gloucester was applying the former Diedrich case and said that it needed a variance. And the court, the appeals court said, well, it only needs a special permit, but nonetheless, we first need to see whether or not it would be a de minimis change as decided under Bjorkland. They didn't find it in that instance because it was a roof with an extension and not a dormer, but they cited specifically the Bjorkland case for the purposes of what a de minimis change would be, including a dormer, as I stated earlier. Next slide, please. So the project does not constitute an upward extension or an extension or impact on the side or or front yard setbacks. There is no dimensional requirement, dimensional standard that are changed under the ordinances as a result of this proposal. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So here is the house. I'm sure many of you will recognize it when we get to it. But as you're driving east on Water Street, it is on the right-hand side. It's got a significant salt box dormer. I'm probably not saying the proper historically architecturally accurate term there, but it's a very large roof in the back that's a salt box, salt box L as described here. And then the the front of the house technically faces Neptune Street, but because the longer frontages on Water Street, the front yard is actually Water Street. So there's nothing about this footprint that changes. Next slide, please. So on the top of this, you can see the existing condition. The existing right side elevation is the elevation you see that faces Water Street. And all the way to the right on the top, you see the existing rear elevations. So as you're driving down Water Street, that's actually the elevation you see. The middle top is actually a front elevation that faces Neptune Street. The proposal is that is to add the dormer, which you can see if we start with the bottom left. That's the, that would be the right side elevation or the Water Street elevation. And you can see it doesn't project above the ridge. It is up from the lower wall. And as you can see on the right-hand side, lower drawing, you can see it also is inset inset from both of the sidelines of the of the roof structure itself. And then, as you can see from the front elevation on Neptune Street in the middle, you don't see the dormer because it's in the in the rear. Next slide, please. Again, here is the, this is the proposed left elevation. So you can see it right now. And then you can see the dormer on top of that. And the next slide, please. So we've also provided letters of support from, I think, seven to four, six, eight neighbors that we have provided to the board. I want to be very clear and the applicant is very sensitive to this. This is an old house. There is no question about it. There are not many late 1,600 houses in the City of Newport. It does not have historic preservation restriction on it. The applicant has followed the ordinance with regards to demolition delay. The applicant purchased this property. If somebody else wanted to save the property, somebody else could have purchased the property as well. The applicant conforms with the ordinance. The addition of a dormer as defined in the ordinance is what is being constructed. And according to leading case law, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it does not constitute an upward extension or intensification of any pre-existing non-conforming setbacks. And with that, and for those reasons, the applicant requests that the board overturn the determination of the zoning code enforcement officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. At this time, we will open the the meeting to public comment. Again, please raise your hand using the raised hand icon if you wish to be heard and clearly state your name and address when you have been recognized by Mr. Port.
And the first person we have is Judy Timon.
Go ahead.
And all speakers will have to unmute on their end as well. Judy, are you with us?
Yes, yes, Judy, Judy Timon, 39 Line Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board about this application. When I heard that 2 Neptune Street was on your agenda, I immediately knew which house it was. Anyone who spent any time in the South End knows the house at 2 Neptune. And honestly, my heart sank. And I'd like to quote one of the members of the Ester Commission who said at their meeting a year ago, when the demolition delay was brought up, that not a hair on this house should be touched. I agree. And I also agree with the city solicitor's interpretation of the applicant's appeal and their interpretation of the applicant's use of the Borkland case as precedent. And this solicitor did say that the Borkland case cited by the owner's counsel is not on point as a concern to reconstruction of a residence on a non-conforming lot. Dormers are not de minimis changes in the context of the City of Newport or in the context of this house. And with that opinion, I think the board has enough information for denial of this appeal. And I also have a question. Have you asked the Historic Commission for a letter regarding this application? Regarding the application for the dormer, I know we're just talking about the appeal. This is an iconic house. It's a salt box. Adding a dormer, the size and scope that they're proposing would change that structure forever. And I know there is a common argument, it was used in the Harrison case, that there needs to be a balance between livability and preservation. And I don't think that the ZBA needs to balance livability and preservation. As all members of the ZBA know, the criteria is, will the application be more substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? This application is a poster child for a project that would be more detrimental to the character of the neighborhood and the entire city. I think it's the job of the city council and of the residents to craft ordinances that balance livability and preservation. And I think the applicant is allowed to put the dormer on this structure. We've truly lost a treasure here. We are the current stewards of these treasures. They've been handed to us to take care of for the last 350 years. And if this proposed change is allowed, we are all responsible and we've all failed at that stewardship. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Timon.
The next person we have is Tom Calderjohn.
Can you hear me?
Sure can. Go right ahead, Mr. Calderjohn.
Thank you. Tom Calderjohn, 64 Federal Street, co-president of the Newport Preservation Trust. The trust opposes, in the strongest terms possible, both the appeal and the request for a special permit. With respect to the appeal, we believe the zoning administrator's determination was both accurate and correct. This is confirmed by KP Law, the city's attorney. We respectfully request that the ZBA follow this legal advice and turn down the appeal. A shed dormer would dramatically alter the streetscape and the structure and would not be appropriate. A shed dormer would dramatically alter the streetscape and the structure and would not be appropriate. It would be a tragedy to lose the unique shape of the salt box roof line after well over three hundred and sixty years. Something like, what, ninety percent of the building of the salt box would be removed and then raised up? So it's gone. This application is clearly detrimental to the neighborhood. It will change forever the relationship between both portions of this two-family house. One side would then overpower the other. Size, scale, and massing would change forever. The smaller portion of the house would be negatively impacted as well as the close neighbors. This is a unique and iconic historic house in a highly visible location. The proposed change would be a tragedy, not only for that particular house, but for the neighborhood and for Newburyport. We have so few first-period houses remaining that they have become precious and very rare. Please don't let them ruin such an important part of Newburyport's history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calderjohn. Next person, please.
The next person we have is identified by Bay State Consultants. If you could state your name and address for the record for the note taker. And you will need to unmute. Are you with us?
Yes, so this is Susan and John Shortley from one Neptune Street. We live directly across the street from the applicant. And we strongly support her proposal. We are very much in favor of the dormer. We, we disagree that it will negatively impact the neighborhood. This is an eclectic mix of homes on this street. There's a wide variety of different types of homes on the street. It's not uniform. It is just not correct that this addition will negatively impact our neighborhood or even the other half of the two-family house. I would also like to say, having lived across the street from the applicant, that she is an outstanding neighbor who has the best interests of the entire neighborhood. I feel very strongly that this applicant is the kind of person we want living in Newburyport. And I, we fully support her application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shortley. Next person, please.
The next person we have is Philip Schwartz.
Hi, thank, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. This is Philip Schwartz, speaking for my wife. And I live at one seventy-eight Water Street. I guess I'd like to comment on two things. First of all, we support this project. Recently, there's been a number of developments in this neighborhood. A couple of houses on Harrison Street, right next door to where we live, the old Daniel's House, which was a first-period house, has been pretty much totally gutted. The roof line facing the street cut in half to put a deck on there. So when, when I compare the projects on Harrison Street, when I compare the project going on right next door to us, and I look at what I consider a relatively modest project that the applicant is proposing, I, I just look at it and, and, or we look at it and, and we really support it. Given an earlier speaker mentioned that livability should not be considered, I strongly disagree. I mean, if, if we want people to own historical houses and maintain them and, and stay with them and for them not to change hand, hand over hand, over hand, the houses have to be livable. And this dormer is really being requested to provide livability on the second floor. So one, I would encourage the board to consider a number of houses that have been significantly changed. They've grown up, their footprints have been, have been huge. Another historical house right next door with major changes made to it, where this one, the changes are relatively minor in comparison to these other projects. And the fact that this is really a livability request, so the second floor can really become more usable. That's it from my side, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Who's next?
Thank you. And the next person is identified by a call-in number, last number ending in four oh seven. You will, I think, need to press star six to unmute.
Hello, am I coming in loud and clear?
Sure are.
Oh, good. Good evening. My name is Reg Bacon. I live at twenty-one Strong Street in Newburyport. And let me disclose first that I work in the history and preservation field and have written extensively on early New England domestic architecture. As such, always crystal clear to me is the difference between a museum house as a static artifact and an organic functioning, lived-in, twenty-first century home. However, I am speaking in opposition to this appeal for three reasons. First, in my view, this appeal to once again challenge the validity of the community's zoning regulations and challenge the astuteness of the zoning enforcement officer's ruling is yet another attempt to make a mockery of the system, the laws, and the public interest and waste the time of the citizen volunteer zoning board and the public in the process. Second, the historical commission did its job and imposed the one-year demolition delay. The applicant waited it out. But where is any documentation in this appeal that the applicant made any good faith effort to seek an alternative to further ravaging the integrity of one of the city's few remaining first-period homes? To me, this shows nothing but contempt for our system of laws. Third, in my view, the gavel must come down hard with a firm no, simply because the tape measure does not lie. The dimensions of the shed dormer are simply too big, according to the regulations. We are lucky to have an attentive zoning board that interprets our ordinances. But deciding whether a particular section of the ordinance applies is an issue for a court appeal, not a zoning board appeal. This appeal should be summarily dismissed. But if, however, the matter of the shed dormer somehow comes slithering back this evening as a hearing for a special permit for nonconformities, I will have more to contribute on whether the epidemic of shed dormer carbuncles sprouting from our historic properties are more or less detrimental, not only to the neighborhood, but to the entire community. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Who's next?
The person we have is Glenn Richards.
Go ahead, Mr. Richards.
Yeah, hi there, Glenn Richards, six Ken Street. And let me just be clear, I'm speaking on my own behalf, not on behalf of the historical commission. Just a couple of points I was going to make have already been raised, so I won't repeat those. So I'll just focus on one simple thing, since this is related specifically to the appeal. The, it's been presented as a, quote, modest alteration. A lot of emphasis has been on it being, you know, de minimis, I believe was the expression used and so on. It even states that it's a, quote, minor extension slash displacement of the roof line, which will occur below the existing height of the roof and within the existing limits of the envelope. Well, I thought the envelope was the envelope of the house. And you can clearly see, if you look at both SG dash ten and SG dash eleven, you know, the envelope, the roof, which is part of the envelope, is definitely changing. It's not within the same roof. That roof is, yeah, I know, I just don't get it. It doesn't make any sense to me. And I, and I think, I don't, it just doesn't seem to hold water. And I'd also just say that the context of the, of a change has to be taken into consideration when determining, is it minimal or not? You know, putting a small red and white, white striped awning might be a minor change in most locations. But what if it were on City Hall? You know, perhaps not. So context is very important. And as other people have already pointed out, you know, the context here is a very rare gem in our city. So I'll leave it at that, and thanks for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
And the person we have is Linda. And Linda, if you could also note your last name for the note taker.
Linda Miller, twenty Ship Street. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Go right ahead.
I'm speaking in opposition to the dormer. This first-period house is one of the few remaining ones in Newburyport. I think there are only four. And it's an iconic form because of its salt box shape. And the dormer addition, which to me is a major addition, ruins the iconic form. And I'm hoping that the Board of Appeal will understand that this is not a minor change. It is quite major, and it does affect the entire community. The more we lose of our historic, especially first-period buildings, the more we lose of the character of our city. And I think it's destructive to the community. And I think it's a lot more detrimental to the community and to the building. And I hope that you will vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Who's next?
And the next person we have is Mary Ann McCauley. And Mary Ann, you may be having a technical issue, I'm not sure. With your audio, I'm getting a message here indicating, I think you had, might have had this issue at a prior meeting. There is a call-in number that you can use as well. In the meantime, we do have Patricia Pecknick, if you'd like to speak.
Yes, Patricia Pecknick, four Dove Street. I agree with Linda Miller that raising a roof this way is not a small-scale alteration. It's an expansion that would destroy the character-defining feature of the house. According to the Colonial Society of Massachusetts, there are only ten houses in the entire state that have been documented to contain structural evidence of being as old as two Neptune. The age of the house was established not only by Richard Irons, a master mason and restorationist, through his inspection of the framing, but through Barb Bailey, whose deed research traced it to sixteen fifty-seven. With a house this old and rare, only a structural engineer experienced at evaluating antique timber frame houses and with a portfolio to prove it can determine whether this side of the house can withstand roof demo of any scale at all without compromising the other side of the house. Roof removal on an antique house can introduce, not reveal, but introduce structural issues that might lead to the need for far more extensive demo of the exterior walls of this rare and prominent house. And I'm very much afraid that approval of this permit for roof demo would put this house on that course. And I think that would be a loss that the city really couldn't bear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pecknick.
I'm sure there are no other hands raised at this time. I noticed that Mary Ann McCauley has left the attendees list. I don't know if she's attempting to call in at this point.
Okay, well, if she does, then.
I would note in the meantime, actually, we do have another hand raised.
Okay, we'll move on.
Stephanie Nikotik.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Stephanie Nikotich, ninety-three High Street. I agree with the comments and concerns of previous speakers who object to this appeal and to the dormer proposal. I won't try to repeat what they have said, but I will add this. At the NHC hearing for this proposal, the owner of two-point-five Neptune, the other side of the house, said, quoting from the minutes, he is not in favor of the proposal. He said the substantial change to the roof line would be visible from Water Street and his part of the house. He said the roof line is an iconic one, and not all of the restoration the application applicant has undertaken has been done with the full respect for the materials, end quote. In addition, if the proposed work does become a structural Pandora's box, as Ms. Pecknick suggested, it could also impact his home. This house abuts a public park directly across the street. A massive dormer, essentially a raised roof on this rare and iconic historic building, will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The city's current master plan is filled with references to the importance of maintaining Newburyport's historic, historic character. In the housing chapter, it says, "The city must work to ensure that residential development is sensitive to and compatible in terms of form, scale, massing, architecture, and materials with Newburyport's distinct, often historic neighborhoods." You have considered this in previous cases tonight. It is no less important, perhaps more so, that you consider it in this case. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nikotich. So we've had no luck. You said Ms. McCauley has not tried to dial back in, is that what you said, Andy?
Yeah, I have not seen her reappear. So it looks like all hands that have been raised have been put down.
Oh, I'm on the phone.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, great.
Mary Ann's with us. Go ahead, Ms. McCauley. We lost her. So close.
Hello?
Yes, yes, go right ahead.
Okay. Two Neptune Street is in my neighborhood, just two blocks from my home on Madison. I pass by it at least twice per day on my dog walks. I've learned that it is the oldest house in the city and once the petting gill homestead. One day, approximately two years ago, if memory serves me well, I was as usual walking my dog when I looked over to see a construction crew hushing through the roof of the oldest house. I was horrified, as were two other people who stood with me witnessing the action. Heading back to my home, I encountered the construction crew and spoke to a gentleman who was the contractor for the job. I asked how this was allowed to happen. His response, yeah, I know, right? As if to suggest that even he couldn't believe the project had been approved. I had recently heard that Newburyport is gaining the reputation as a city that does not care about its history. I fear that granting the variance for this oldest house in the city would cement that reputation. The bottom line is this, two Neptune Street is the oldest house in the city. It is a classic assault box. It is a classic first-period house. Grafting a dormer onto a salt box would completely change its roof line, rendering it no longer a salt box. I respectfully request that the zoning board protect the character of this piece of American history, the character of the community, and the character of the city, and deny this request for a dormer. And if I could add an addendum here. I live in a relatively old house dating back to eighteen eighty-four. It is a deeded half-house. My neighbor on the other side recently went to the, the building department to request the addition of a dormer on her side of the house and was told by the building department that because we lived in a historic community, they would deny her request. So I am at a complete loss as to how a house two hundred years older than my house could be granted a variance to allow a dormer to happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. McCauley. Before you go, could you give us your full address for the record, please?
Twenty-five Madison Street.
Twenty-five Madison, thank you very much.
And Mary Ann, I would also note, I guess, as the Zoom host for this meeting, my, the messages that I've received from Zoom, it looks as if the Zoom application you have on your computer might be out of date. Perhaps if that's updated, you will be able to connect easier next time, so.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
And thank you for hearing me.
You're welcome.
And Chair, that is, there are no other hands raised at this time.
That's it for public comment. We'll close that portion and move on to questions from the board. I'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Attorney Mead, could I ask the question of percentages? What percentage of the roof is going to be affected by this so-called dormer or not dormer?
Well, Mr. Delisle, I don't, I don't have the exact percentage of the part of the saltback box that's going to have a dormer on it. I think it's Andy, if you can increase the size of the lower right hand slide. So that's the that's the proposal up close. I would, I would say, let me also be clear. And I don't think you meant this in any particular way, Mr. Delisle, but by definition, in the Code of Ordinances, this is a dormer. And so it's not, not a dormer, it's a dormer. It's not an accepted, EXC, accepted dormer under the guidelines, right? So the guidelines say if you're gonna
Attorney Mead, I don't mean to be rude, but that that was my next sort of
Okay, I apologize.
I wasn't, I wasn't in saying dormer or not dormer, it was because I had a question about that very, very But I did, I did just want to sort of get back to just the percentage of that, that backside of the roof. So, so we don't really know, it looks from the picture that Andy brought up that it's a significant percentage, but we don't, we don't have the number.
Yeah, I don't know, sir, I don't. And Andy, I'm not sure if you can mute Mary Ann, but I'm having, there's a lot of interference coming from her. Her name keeps popping up as still being on, so. And so I am having a hard time hearing Mr. Delisle sometimes.
Yeah, oddly, she does not appear in our list right now. Yeah.
So this would be a good point in time to allow you to resume the discussion about what is a dormer versus what is an accepted dormer under the Code of Ordinances, because that certainly is something that I would need to understand more.
Sure. So if I, if I'm an applicant and I want to put on a dormer, if I follow the guidelines, guidelines, not ordinance, right? If I follow the guidelines that are in the plant, in the planning office pursuant to the ordinance, then I don't have to, it's not considered a roof line change. They are accepted dormers, ACC, accepted dormers. However, the term dormer for the purposes of demolition under the ordinance section 5-307 is defined under the building section of the ordinance, which is where demolition delay is found. And that, that definition, and Andy, I had it on an earlier slide, is a rooftop appurtenance as distinguished from a vertical addition to a building or structure built out from a sloping roof and not extending above the ridge line of the roof from which it projects, set back from all walls of the building or structure below it and containing one or more windows. A dormer may either be a shed dormer or a gabled doghouse dormer. A shed dormer has a roof with a single slope and its eve line parallel to the ridge line of the roof from which it projects. And a gabled dormer has a gabled hipped or arched roof. Its ridge line perpendicular to the ridge line of the roof from which it projects. That is the definition in the Code of Ordinances under demolition, which controls the demolition delay.
Okay, and that's certainly what you described is what we have here.
That's correct.
What, what is, so the, the, is it an accepted or accepted? I think you said ACC, right?
Yes, the accepted dormers are the guidelines. That means that if I do an accepted dormer, it's not considered a roof line change and I would not need to go to demolition delay.
Okay, and are there dimensions associated with, with
Yes.
that with those guidelines?
Yes.
Know what those dimensions are?
Um, I don't have the guidelines in front of me, but I will tell you, for example, that I believe off the top of my head, you have to come in three and a half feet off of each of the sides. And there's a dimension that you have to come up from the bottom. That doesn't work in this instance, given the, the house. The whole idea is to get some more room on that second floor bathroom and study. And if we comply with the setbacks of the accepted dormer, ACC, then it doesn't meet code. So Andy, if you could go to the, do we have the floor plans here? No, they're in the next presentation. So the floor plans show the, the bathroom and the study that's going to have a little more space added to it. And because the clearance for the shower and around the shower isn't sufficient enough, it doesn't meet code if you use the dimensions of the accepted dormer.
Okay, that's good information and helpful. So the, your dormer, the dormer that we're discussing is in the, the side setbacks for the property, correct?
Well, the whole house is non-conforming, so, but it steps in, right? So if you can see the L, which is like, I just want to add, I want to clarify something. So first of all, nobody is arguing that the house is not old, but it should be noted that the salt box L was added in 1725, not 1657. So that's the house. And so it would be inside of the front yard setback. And of course, it would be against the rear as well because the front yard is actually Water Street because it's longer, right? So, yeah, so it's, but, but under the exception of Borkland, Borkland says dormers are not by law, it actually says legally, are not considered intensifications.
Right. Now, if you were doing a vertical wall, that would constitute an upward extension, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. Without, we do not doubt that at all.
Okay, okay. Okay, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton.
Yeah, thank you. So I've learned a lot about this house in this process. In fact, I was surprised to hear that it's documented to be one of the 10 oldest houses in the entire Commonwealth. And we keep talking about this house and I have quite a few questions about the special permit, but this agenda topic is actually about the appeal. So I'm going to save my questions about the house itself and focus in on the appeal. Basically, the city solicitor, in the response to the appeal, has, has, as I think you've seen, given us his input as to why he does not think the appeal is valid, why he supports what the zoning administrator has done and essentially requiring you to have a special permit for this very large dormer. And so I guess I don't have any questions on that because, you know, we're volunteer board members. We have a city solicitor who's backing up the zoning administrator. You're calling the zoning administrator into question and citing a bunch of cases and the city solicitor is responding and I don't have the expertise to play judge here and second guess the city solicitor. So, you know, and quite frankly, this is two meetings in a row now that we're sitting here struggling with an application to appeal something that's the city solicitor is telling us is, is, is not correct. That the appeal doesn't make sense. And this is really getting tiring. These meetings are long. And I would like to get on to talk about this house. I don't really, so I don't have any questions to the appeal. I think the city solicitor is being very clear. He's not here to answer any questions anyway. So I yield my time.
Mr. Chairman, I just add a comment.
Sure, go right ahead.
So, Mr. Swanton, I, I know that this is an uncomfortable position to be in, but lucky you, you volunteered for the job. And one of the jobs of the zoning board is to decide appeals. And so if the job was the city solicitor, you just got to write the opinion and that was that, then there would be no role for the zoning board of appeals. But in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are an adjudicatory body and you get to weigh the facts as you see them. What the city solicitor, as I have said to the board, has failed to do is has failed to tell the board what the most recent case law is on this. Now, you can disagree with me in that you've totally able to do that and it is what it is. But please know that you have a job to do to weigh the facts and the law in front of you as uncomfortable as that may be.
If I could reply, I never said I was uncomfortable. I said it was tiring. I'm very comfortable. You've made a proposal. He's made his response. I'd like to get on to a vote. So I have no questions for you. Thank you. I'm not uncomfortable. I understand what you're doing. I understand the process you're going through. I'm tired with it, but I'm not uncomfortable. So I look forward to voting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swan, and thank you, Attorney Mead. We'll move on to Mr. Chagman.
Yeah, I guess in reading the, the appeal and the response from our solicitor, it's hard wading through the minutia. Again, the, the appeal seems to make a compelling argument. And it is difficult to, to make a decision one way or the other. I, I do agree, it is our board's job to wade through this, that there is an appeal process and, you know, certainly our citizens deserve that, that we make that consideration. With that said, I've got no questions. I, I will, I will listen for deliberations and make my decision at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chagman. Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I, I understand the issue. I have read the papers presented by both the city solicitor and counsel, and I appreciate the thorough and comprehensive presentation. I have no questions. I think I understand the issue and I don't need any further elaboration on your legal position. And I'm prepared to discuss and deliberate on it when we're prepared to do so.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And I, I too, I feel as prepared as we can be right now to go into deliberations. I don't have any further questions on this appeal. So I will close the questions from the board and move on to deliberations with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So, okay, I think what we have here is we have we have multiple definitions for the same thing. We have a dormer. Is it, is it the type of dormer that is an accepted dormer that is limited in scope and has set dimensions under the, the planning office's guidelines that are informed by the, the Code of Ordinances? Or is it the type of dormer that Attorney Mead read the definition for us from the is that from the demolition delay ordinance? Which is a, which is much broader in scope? So I think that's the question before us is what is the Bjorkland case talking about if that is the controlling law here and it comes from our Supreme Judicial Court? So in looking at what the Bjorkland case discusses, it talks about certain types of alterations, extensions and structural changes to pre-existing houses in, in the, in the sort of portion of the case that, that you're citing. And it does talk about a dormer. It talks about the enclosure of a porch or a sunroom, addition of a one-story or two-story garage or, I'm sorry, one-story garage or conversion of a one-story garage to a two-vehicle garage. The addition of small-scale proportional storage structures such as sheds to store gardening and lawn equipment or sheds to house swimming pool heaters and equipment. And then it says, because of those small scale, their small-scale nature, the improvements mentioned could not reasonably be found to increase the non-conforming nature of a structure. And the court then concluded as a matter of law that they would not constitute intensifications. I don't know what Judge, Justice, excuse me, Justice Greeney had in mind when he wrote that. I don't know if he was thinking about a dormer that spanned nearly the entire back roof of a, of a structure or if he was thinking of a dormer that was more restricted in its nature. So I, I can't put myself in that position to, to, to determine what, what kind of dormer he was talking about. He uses the, the term small scale twice. So I think that leads me to believe that the dormer that the Bjorkland case is envisioning is something smaller than the entire back roof or 70% of the back roof or 80% of the back roof. So for that reason, I, I'm having difficulty finding support for the for the appeal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swan.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Delisle said it kind of well there. You know, in this case, our zoning enforcement officer said it requires an upward extension. There, it's an upward extension. Therefore, you need a special permit. My understanding, as came out of the discussion, is because it was too big. If it had been a foot and a half, not a foot, and if it had been, you know, a lot more off the bottom as well and it's smaller, then she would not have flagged it for a special permit and we would not be sitting here talking about this appeal. In fact, we wouldn't be looking to special permit. They just build a smaller dormer. But because it's so large, she flagged it. The appeal was made and our zoning, our council has looked at it and basically backed up the action of our zoning enforcement officer and said, yep, she's appropriate to make that ruling. It does require a special permit. So, you know, I think the town, the zoning enforcement officer acted correctly according to our city solicitor. Our city solicitor put together a, a good analysis of it. I'm happy that our, one of our lawyers on the team here, Mr. Delisle, seems to concur with the, the size issue there. So I too, in the end of the day here, would not vote in favor of this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chagman.
Yeah, interesting discussions. You know, obviously, I think being a board with the city, it's, it's hard to go against the city solicitor. But I, again, I do think the, the appeal is a compelling argument. I'm not sure based on some of the discussion, that there's any dormer that on this house that may have been found to be significantly small enough to not warrant the special permit, which, which causes concern for me because, you know, this is a massive roof, roof and there has to be a dormer at some point that's just a, a very, very small change and does not a very, very small change and and does not affect any upward extension of, uh, of the nonconformity. With that said, um, I I would tend to side with the city solicitor. Uh, uh, but, uh, I'm I'm still on the fence, to be honest. That that's the end of my comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chagman. Uh, Mr. Bennet.
Yeah, I would vote to deny the appeal, uh, for two reasons. First, uh, as a matter of administrative deference and deference to the individuals assigned in the first instance to interpret the zoning ordinance, I will give that deference to our zoning officer and I will not disturb that decision in my view unless I find it clearly erroneous, uh, and I don't find it clearly erroneous here. Second, uh, although the cases presented by counsel are certainly instructive and thoughtfully presented, uh, I don't find the cases, uh, on all fours and presidential to the extent that they would lead us to a conclusion that, uh, under the holding of Borkland, that, uh, the dormer proposed here is a small-scale, uh, structure. Uh, I think that there are myriad facts which would inform that determination. Uh, there was no discussion of that type of factual a presentation in Borkland, and therefore I don't find it, uh, presidential here in any way, shape or form. Uh, for those reasons, I would deny the application for this appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. Um, I I guess for for many of the reasons most recently with the stated by Mr. Bennet and all my colleagues. Um, I'd have a hard time, uh, supporting this appeal. Um, again, although thoughtfully represented by case law and trying to make a case that this shouldn't, uh, this should go to a special permitting process. Um, I, like one of my colleagues, kept getting drawn back to the terms, you know, minor alteration, small scales changes, changes so slight. And I I I don't find, um, that a dormer of this size would compel me to override a decision made, um, by the planning office, um, and zoning officer on on what was required here after a delay. So although, as I said, um, instructive, compelling, and compelling, um, like this testimony of case law that we were, we tried to wade through tonight uh, on both sides, um, I would also be leaning on our on our counsel, um, of KPLA, who again kind of have backed up what many on the board are saying. What I'm saying is that, uh, this this is not small-scale, uh, and not just, um, a dormer. And I cannot see supporting the appeal as well. With that said, um, at least we will close deliberations and be looking for, uh, some kind of motion here.
Mr. Delisle, I'll make a motion to approve the appeal of the zoning officer's determination for two Neptune Street, file number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five.
So I second the motion. Greg Bennet here.
So Delisle, can you restate that for me?
It's a motion to approve the zoning appeal, uh, i- i- the appeal of the zoning officers or zoning administrators zoning determination for two Neptune Street application or, uh, number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five.
Got it. Thank you. And again, it was seconded by whom? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Bennet seconded it.
Mr. Bennet, I thought so. Just want to make sure. Okay, so a motion to approve the appeal made by Mr. Delisle, seconded by Mr. Bennet. We now go to a vote. Mr. Delisle.
No.
Mr. Swanton.
No.
Mr. Chagman.
No.
Mr. Bennet.
No.
Mr. Moore is a no. It's all, uh, in denial. So the appeal is denied for two Neptune Street. That closes out that item on the agenda. We'll move to the next, which is two Neptune Street. Uh, application twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six, a special permit for nonconformities to add a dormer in the rear roof of pre-existing non-conforming structure. Um, Patty and Bampus represented by Lisa Mead of Mead, Tellman, and Costa. Might we hear from the applicant?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, and just for the record, for this application, Lisa Mead, Mead, Tellman, Costa, on behalf of Patty and Bump, Bampus, for two Neptune Street. And this is an application for, um, a special permit for nonconformities. Um, of course, reserving all of our rights under the prior application. Um, so if you can go to the next slide, Andy. So I'm not going to spend too much time on the first part of this, um, because the board has already heard these facts. Um, we're proposing to add a shed dormer on the rear of the pre-existing non-conforming home, the front part of the home having originally been built in seven sixteen fifty-seven, the rear in seventeen twenty-five. The addition, which we'll be able to see shortly, uh, will provide a hundred and forty square feet of living space on the second floor. The property is now non-conforming, uh, for just about every dimension, uh, in the R-two zoning district. Uh, the lot area is one thousand six hundred twenty-one square feet, where ten thousand is required. Pre- property frontage is eighty-seven point twenty-four, where ninety feet is required. The front yard setback is two point six, where twenty-five feet is required. Left side yard is two point six, where ten is required. Rear yard is zero, where twenty-five is required. And the maximum lot coverage is twenty-five percent and the property has forty-eight point seven percent, um, lot coverage. Uh, the shed dormer will be fully encompassed when the within the existing dimensions of the home, uh, and there will be no new nonconformities created. Um, except for, apparently, if the zoning code enforcement officer has said there will be an upward extension of the front yard setback. Next, please. Um, as you can see on this, um, dimensional table, uh, there is no change in any of the required dimensional um, controls as defined within the ordinance. Um, notwithstanding the zoning enforcement officer's determination. Next slide, please. Uh, and so here is the site plan again. You can see the house, uh, and the L on the back of which is proposed to be placed the dormer. And the next slide, please. Uh, and so here is the, uh, here's the drawing that I was looking for earlier. Uh, if you could blow that up a little bit, Andy, I'd appreciate it. So on the left is the existing conditions on the second floor. Uh, you can see the dotted line that runs through the closet, the bathroom and the study. That's kind of where the low, that's the lowest angle of the roof over those spaces. So you don't have full head height back in there. Uh, so the proposal is to add the dormer, uh, which will add just enough head height to get that additional um, space in the bathroom and the study. And of course, the closet is redesigned and would be extended as well. But you can see how it affects the living space, um, on the second floor, um, of the existing structure. Uh, you'll note as we go through these floor plans that the significant amount of the living space, not surprising for a house of this age, is taken up by, uh, the chimneys. Next slide, please. And again, this is familiar to you. This is the design for the added dormer, um, on the rear of the structure or the side, depending on which you use as the front yard. And the next slide, please. And again, here is the, uh, side view, uh, from the proposed left side elevation. So, um, in the next slide, please. So I think that it's important. Here's the structure and we're going to go, I'm going to run through a number of slides because uh, first, uh, I would say under section nine B three, the applicant is not creating any new nonconformities. Uh, so it complies with the first, um, provision in section nine. And, um, the second is whether or not would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing uh, nonconforming structure, taking into consideration the factors such as size, scale, massing, volume, and location of proposed structure, extension, or alteration as compared to the existing structure and other structures in the neighborhood. And I think what we need to see here, and some of the neighbors already pointed out, particularly, um, Mrs. Short Sleeve directly across the street, is that this neighborhood is very eclectic and has a whole host of different styles of houses. So the house directly in front of you here is the, um, the house in question. And the next slide, please. And I'm just going to point out, um, a couple of things before we start going through some of the lower slides. There are some addresses on some of the lower slides that give general areas but are not specific to the houses, just to just so people aren't thrown off by the addresses that we throw on the slides, but mostly so you can see what streets they on. So this is looking up Neptune from, um, from Joppa Park. And you can see the dormer in that house, um, up the street there. Uh, you can see the various additions added to the house on the left at one Neptune Street. Uh, next slide, please. And here is the back, um, L of that ha- of the house, uh, in question, and then the house immediately next door at two hundred. Um, so you can see the rear, um, dormer and you you can see absolutely the size of the chimney there too. Next slide, please. Um, and what we're about to go through are all the various, uh, neighborhood uh, roof lines and houses. And then again, uh, these are the eight letters of support that you've received. And then, of course, you've heard from some uh, neighbors tonight. So the next slide, please, so you can see how this will not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. So this is on up the street, on Neptune Street. Again, this is actually, uh, uh, you can see the different styles of house. You can see the red house above that has a, also has a shed roof, not a shed roof, but a, um, salt box roof on it. You can see the dormer on this house on Neptune Street of different era. Next house, next slide, please. And here's looking down Neptune Street at the opposite direction. So you can see out to the river and you can see the various additions that have been placed on these houses. Next slide, please. And here's further up Neptune Street away from the river. Next slide, please. Uh, and here are some other houses on Neptune Street. So there's just about every style, age, and size of house on Neptune Street. Next slide. And, um, this is actually one ninety-eight Water Street that sits very far back, uh, but this is a very modern house in the neighborhood, not necessarily visible, uh, during the summer, uh, from Water Street, uh, but this is a very eclectic house as well. Next slide, please. And here's, uh, this is actually, uh, one Harrison Street, uh, looking down towards uh, Water Street to the east, and you can see the various styles of houses here. Next slide, please. And these are, uh, Water Street houses two hundred, one ninety-six, one ninety-four. Next slide, please. And this is the opposite side of Water Street, and you can see the various additions and changes to these houses. In fact, what's interesting about this group of houses is we have three completely different styles all in one. We got a Gambrel. Then you've got the the two gable-ended houses with dormers and chimneys, very different style houses immediately adjacent. And you can see uh, the house across the street at the corner, uh, right at the entrance to Hale Park, which also has a a salt box roof with a shed dormer, not a shed dormer, but a gable dormer on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. This is Harrison Street. It's not ten Harrison Street. It's actually across the street from ten Harrison Street. Uh, but here we have a farmer's porch coming off of a house on Harrison Street. Next slide, please.
I believe that's the last slide.
Okay, thank you. So my point in, uh, showing you all of these various iterations of houses in the neighborhood is that there is not one size, scale, or mass of a house in this area of, uh, Newburyport, along Harrison, Neptune, uh, Madison even, and Water Street. They are all of different sizes and configurations in this immediate ne- neighborhood. And we believe that based upon that, uh, this proposed addition of this dormer will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing pre-existing non-conforming structure. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. Um, we will now go to public comments again, and I assume that, um, many of the people that, uh, may have commented previously want to be heard again. If that's the case, you will be heard, but but we'll try to be succinct as possible, um, given the familiarity with the with the application. Um, with that said, use the, uh, raise hand icon and, uh, you'll be recognized and again, state your name and address clearly before you speak and remember to unmute. And do we have any hands raised?
Uh, first person we have chair is Judy Timon.
Hi, thank you, uh, Judy Judy Timon, thirty-nine Lime Street. And I just wanted to say, I think, uh, the attorney for the applicant just did a very good job of showing, uh, the different types of houses in the area and the fact that this is a unique house in the area that it stands out in the area that it can be seen as soon as you enter Joppa Park, that it is a unique first period house in the area that should be preserved. And those photographs showed that dramatically. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Timon. Is there anyone else?
Uh, next person we have is Tom Colterjohn.
Can you hear me?
We sure can. Go ahead.
Thank you. Tom Colterjohn, sixty-four Federal Street, co-president of Newburyport Preservation Trust. The trust opposes strongly this request for a special permit. The shed dormer is huge and ruins the historic character of this house and neighborhood. It is detrimental to the neighborhood in size, scale, and massing. It clearly obliterates the defining salt box shape of this historic house. Something like what? Eighty or ninety percent of the roof is to be destroyed and moved upward? This is a rare and precious house. Please don't let them ruin it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colterjohn. And who is, uh, who would like to go next?
Next person is Glenn Richards.
Right ahead, Mr. Richards. Remembering to unmute.
Sorry about that. Trouble finding my.
I tried.
Okay. Glenn Richard, sixth Ken Street, again, uh, speaking just for myself here. Um, just a couple of quick things. I know it's getting late. The, I'd first like to point out that the, in the illustrations of some of those nearby dormers, like four dash five Neptune Street, are great examples. They're great examples of the kind of dormer that inspired the, you know, the attention to dormers and the restrictions that were imposed uh, and written into some of the more recent ordinances. Uh, it's exactly that kind of huge dormer that, um, you know, the city is trying to avoid. So, um, citing, showing those off as examples of what what's kind of fine to do is ironic. Uh, the, again, the, you know, the pro- proposal, they talk a lot about not more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing structure, mostly mostly focused, not almost exclusively, actually, I should say, focused on dimensional requirements. Uh, as the quote-quote, "This small addition does not impact an indimentional requirements." And, uh, I just have to disagree with that characterization because I think the board needs to consider the detriment to the historical value of the structure, to the neighborhood, and to the city as a whole. It's my personal opinion that this dormer will result in the permanent loss of the historical character and integrity of the house, which, uh, as I think you know, is one of the oldest. We already talked about that. You know, it's it's the roof, the roof line would no longer i- i- is so critical that's that's what gives the design of the house its name, you know, a salt box that would be permanently destroyed. You know, it's not a reversible change. An example of a reversible change, like the standards talk about, is like a, you put on a strong window. You can undo that in ten minutes with a screwdriver. But this would, uh, destroy critical framing and and other things that would not be, uh, reversible. So I ask the board to please, uh, defend this unique structure so it can be continued to be appreciated for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Who else would like to comment?
Uh, next person we have is a call-in, uh, uh, last, uh, three digits of the call-in number are four oh seven. If you could state your name and address for the record. Um, and you will need, I think, to press star six to unmute.
Hello, this is Reg Bacon, uh, twenty-one Strong Street, uh, once again. Am I coming in loud and clear?
You sure are.
Oh, good. Uh, well, this, uh, property that we've been talking about this evening, it was so well-studied, uh, for the last forty years that I included it i- in one of my books as an example to illustrate, uh, the identifiable first period features. Uh, so, uh, you know, I don't know, whatever happens in the future, well, maybe I'll have to change, uh, change the photo. Anyway, I am speaking against the special permit for nonconformity. Anyway, I am speaking against the special permit for non-conformities. Uh, this property is one of the few first period houses remaining in Newburyport and, and its stewardship is front and center because of its location on the heavily traveled Water Street. Uh, and regarding the more or less detrimental question, in my view, Newburyport is already the shed dormer capital, as shown in the photos we saw a few minutes ago. Uh, and perhaps the horse is already out of the barn on our city's remaining authenticity. Uh, and perhaps we're already Disneyfied beyond reclamation. Uh, but in my view, while any individual applicant is entitled to have their appeal heard, uh, the other 15,000 or 20,000 people in Newburyport are entitled to have their zoning ordinances applied so as to protect one of the community's greatest collective assets, which is the integrity of what we have left and our historic ambiance. Uh, so I urge you to deny this, uh, special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. Uh, who else would like to comment?
Uh, we have Stephanie Nikotic, who's raised her hand.
Right ahead.
Hi, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie Nikotic, 93 High Street. Again, I agree with other speakers. And particularly, I thought that it was, it was odd that architectural diversity was presented as something that, that speaks for this dormer. Architectural diversity is not the issue. That is actually one of the beauties of Newburyport's historic neighborhoods. The issue is destroying one of the most unique historic buildings in the city. Um, I also agree with Mr. Richards that the slideshow also demonstrated one of the reasons that there was, uh, there was a demand to improve our laws when it comes to dormers. And that's five, uh, that's five Neptune Street. It was one of the poster children in 2018, when the new ordinances were being written. Uh, I also wanted to just talk a little bit about livability because that came up during the appeal hearing as the reason for this change. Uh, this house was, was livable as it is until 2019, which is when the applicant purchased it. And the argument of livability and viability of a house has come up before at the ZBA and especially during hearings for demolition under the D-Cod. Uh, so people have said, well, this house is simply too small to live in, even though someone had been living there, you know, up until the, the, the time that the person just purchased the building. So when you buy a building, you know, you see its size. You see its condition. And I'm sorry, you know, I've said this in, in many other cases. If you wanted a bigger house, you, you could have purchased one. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nikotic. Anyone else like to comment?
And Patricia Peknik.
Thank you, Patricia Peknik for Doe Street. I just want to point out the applicant presented this exact same proposal, the exact same proposal to the Historical Commission last summer, and it was unanimously opposed. That was so rare. It was the first time that it had happened. The NHC actually allows dormers all the time, as long as they conform, especially if they're not on highly visible elevations. But the commission spent many, many hours last year determining that the raising of the roof this way would have a negative impact on the city's historic assets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peknik. Anyone else like to comment?
See no other hands, Chair.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we will close public comment portion and move on to questions from the board. And we'll lead off with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I have a few questions. Attorney Mead, I'd like to give you a, a chance to, to speak to this point because I think it's come up a couple of times. During the, the one year period, wh- what, was, was there anything in particular that the applicant attempted to do to make the, the project, to make, to, to change the project at all? Or is this the, sort of the same project? Because, you know, uh, under the, under the ordinance, you, if you wait, then you can go forward.
So, um, there are, uh, so just to be clear, the applicant tried in the original design to make it as, as tight to the house as possible without, and still being able to get that extra space on that second floor for the bathroom and study area. And so having done that and understanding that to not do that would not make it code compliant, uh, she didn't make, uh, any changes, any other changes other than what was presented to the Historic Commission at that time.
Okay, thank you. That's, um, that's helpful. Thank you. So with the roof and the proposed, changes to the roof, has there been any sort of study to determine whether the remaining parts of the roof would be able to, withstand the, um, the demolition and the, and the building that would be associated with the, um, the addition of the dormer?
So the, um, the front part of the roof is new, um, but the back part is not. But the, the designer, Jelenus Construction, Jelenus is a structural engineering firm. So he's, yeah.
Um, what you just said, uh, was interesting. So could you explain the, what, the, the front part of the roof?
So there had the front part of the roof when the solar panels were installed, um, they had to redo the, the parts of members of the front part of the roof uh, to be able to withstand the end hole. They had to take off two layers of shingles, repair some of the rafters that were in there in order to be able to hold the, um, solar panels.
Um, so when they, they repaired or just sort of strengthened what was there existing um, in order to, to, uh, to take that weight of the, the added solar panels?
That's correct. I don't know exactly how they did it. I wasn't involved in that, but that's my understanding.
No, no, I understand that. I guess, I guess the question was, was it a, an entire rebuild of the roof or just sort of a, a strengthening the roof here and there?
Yes. Yeah, I apologize. I'm, I'm, you know, given our situation here, I've not, I'm like reading some texts as they come in. Um, so the purlins were warped and so the total front of that roof was redone.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. Th- that's helpful.
You're welcome. Can I add, uh, can I add something here, Mr. Chair? I just want to comment on one of the comments of, some of the comments of the.
Go right ahead.
Public, um, you know, the, the standard is, and the reason we showed everything in the neighborhood is that to show that it's not the same. And it may be that this is a unique house, but everything in the neighborhood is unique. Um, and so the comparison that the board is supposed to make is whether or not it will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood by way of all of those things, size, scale, massing, volume. And so the question is, what is all of that in the neighborhood? And my point in showing all of the photographs is that it's all very different. It's not all the same. Uh, I'm not going to make qualifying comments about each of the structures except for to say it's all very different and it's not the same.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Mr. Delisle, were you done with questions?
Um, for now I am, Mr. Chairman. I, I may pop back in with another question, uh, but I'm okay for now. Thank you.
Feel free. Just give a heads up. Uh, Mr. Swanton?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to, um, go back to something that came up earlier. I, I think the question here isn't whether or not a dormer can go on this roof. Uh, I, I believe the zoning enforcement officer flagged this particular dormer because it was oversized. That's why it needs a special permit. So I guess my question is more directed at the planning office and maybe to our zoning enforcement officer. But my understanding is if you could put up the elevation on the one that shows the numbers on it to show the size of this dormer. My understanding, uh, is the, yeah, the top right picture there shows, or the, yeah, or that one, either one. It shows it's one foot off of the sideline. And my understanding is if it was a foot and a half, she wouldn't have flagged it. But the other thing it would needed to have been, if you go over to the elevation that shows the, uh, how far it's set back off the roof, yeah, that one. It shows, you can see it says it's two feet back off that back roof. My understanding is if it was three and a half feet off the roof, it would not have been flagged and we would not be here tonight. And I just want to make sure I understand that. My understanding is, to repeat my question, that a dormer can be built here. It's just that this oversized dormer, because it's not one and a half feet off the side and three and a half feet off the back, that's the reason it's flagged. I- is, is that understanding correct? I guess that's. The planning department.
Yeah, Andy, is that something? Jennifer has raised her hand.
Okay, great.
But just as a point of clarification, the, uh, on this illustration in front of us, the dimension shown in order for it to be exempt, and that is exempt from a roofline change, it would need to be one foot six back in the dimension shown. And in the previous illustration, the one foot dimension would need to be three foot six. Um, th- those are the dimensions that would be required to make a dormer exempt from a roofline change. They are not necessarily synonymous with what would, what one would use to, make the judgment of whether or not the dormer was a subordinate roof form or, or a small enough dormer to not be an upward extension. We have not seen that proposal before us. So I, I have not yet made that judgment. But the dimensions you were referencing are reversed. In fact, this would be three foot six, uh, that it would need to be in order to be exempt.
So the one, the one in this diagram would have to be three and a half?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm basically, you know, we're talking about this dormer for a long time. So it's not the fact that there's a dormer. It's the reason it's been flagged and that we're sitting here tonight with a special permit is simply because it's larger than, it's so large that you flagged it. So if it was a smaller dormer, we wouldn't be here. So thank you, thank you for validating that.
Um, I don't think, if we could have a clarification on Ms. Blanchett, because I don't think that's actually what she said in the end. She said that it, it doesn't mean that she wouldn't have flagged it for an upward extension just because it met those two dimensional requirements. Is that not what you said, Jennifer?
Let's clarify that with Jennifer, please.
I have not yet seen that proposal. So I, I, I cannot make that determination until I see that represented what it would in fact look like.
And if I could, I, I appreciate you be very careful. Let me ask a very simple question then. Um, can, is there? Do you restrict all dormers from this roof? Or would some smaller dormer, which I know you haven't seen the plans yet, but be okay? Or are you essentially saying, you know, no, you can never put a dormer on this roof?
It would be my assumption that there would certainly be a dormer that would be acceptable on this roof, uh, that would qualify under, um, appropriate case law as, as a de minimis change.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my next question, um, we heard earlier that back when this same normer was proposed in front of the Historic Commission, that the, the abutter, the person who shares this house, basically the person in the other half of the house, uh, objected and it's in the minutes. I think Ms. Stephanie Nikovich read the minutes. I guess my question is, have we heard anything from the person who lives in the other half of the house that they've changed their mind and that they now support this? Is there anything to, or is that the last we've heard from the person who lives on the other side of the house that they don't like this proposal? Is there any change? I guess I'm asking Attorney Mead, have you heard anything?
Well, I can, I, I can only tell you what I've gotten, Mr. Swanton, which are the letters that you've received. And you've heard the people that have spoken tonight. So I can't, I can't guess one way or the other, uh, related to the neighbor.
Okay. All right, um, you know, I think the various opinions have been well presented here. I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Swan. Uh, Mr. Tegnan?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I guess to jump off on some of the discussion, um, Attorney Mead, is a smaller dormer possible? Or do, do you start getting into, again, building code violations when you, when you start shrinking this? Or, or, or do you not know the answer to that?
Well, I, I do know the answer, I do know the answer as to meeting the accepted ACC from a historical perspective. Thank you for that differential, Jennifer, uh, dormers. Is that if it went three and a half feet, which essentially would be seven feet, right? You lose seven feet to door, three and a half feet on each side in, that it would, code, the bathroom would not be code compliant. So, um, it, that does not work. So, you know, if, it would be, you know, if it stayed out on the one side and went in on the other side where the study is, uh, would that work? I don't, I don't think so, but I think that would also look odd on the house to have a, a dormer that wasn't symmetrical with a salt box style, um, roof plane, if you will.
Yeah, agree.
Yeah, and so I think it either has to be even or it doesn't have to be even. And if you take it three and a half feet in on the one side to meet the requirements, then we lose the code compliance. So that's, that's the problem with that particular stretch. And I, and I, and I think the board knows this. You know, there's, we have rules for historic preservation in the city and they are very clear. The DCOD, the DOD and the historic, uh, the demolition delay. And then there are zoning regulations, right? So if, if one complies, then it is what it is. So even though all of the Historic Commission, with all due respect to them, said no to this, okay, that's fine. The result of that no and the consequences are what's set out in the ordinance. That is, there is a year delay and/or you do something else. And now it's a different standard. And, you know, some of the things are, there's a different standard in the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance doesn't say, you know, how old is the house or how young is the house, at least in this particular case. But here are the standards, you know, are, are there any increase in non-conformities? And there aren't here. In fact, I think Jennifer would agree that the dimensional table doesn't change. And so there are not. So then the question becomes, uh, if you go down this path of a special permit, which is what makes it awkward, is that, uh, size, scale, massing, volume, is it substantially, uh, more detrimental to the neighborhood? And that's a determination, obviously, that the board has to make.
Yeah, and, and I, I guess one of the thing I, I just bring up, I mean, the front of this house has solar panels on it? Is, that's correct?
That's correct.
And, and I assume, um, you can put solar panels on a house by right.
That, that's correct. They're, they're, um, they're controlled by the building code uh, and may not be controlled by zoning. Um, they're controlled by the building code and that's why you can do it. That's correct.
But I just find it interesting that we're, we're having deliberations on this massive, large salt box roof that if, if this house was turned slightly south, the owner could pepper it with solar panels. Regardless, it just seemed, it just seems like, uh, you know, we turn our back on solar panels, but we, we don't want to put a dormer. All right, thank you. I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tegnan. Uh, Mr. Bennet?
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to follow up on that line of.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that line of inquiry. It's intriguing to me. Attorney Mead, can you tell us what other exterior alterations or changes have been made to this building over, this home over the years?
Oh, Mr. Bennet, I don't think so. I mean, I think we're looking at these windows.
Okay, I was going to ask, are those windows original?
Those windows are certainly not original to the house. The siding is not original to the house. Obviously, we have solar panels, the chimney, obviously the chimney is original. That's a, you know, it is. I, you know, internally, I believe that a lot of preservation has occurred. That's what I'm informed. The prior owner had a combination of vinyl and wood on the exterior of the house, and so the shingles were restored and as were the clabbards on the front.
Right, right. Yeah, I'm just trying to get a handle on to what extent we are looking at a true historical structure or the structure that is historical aspects, but has been changed and modified and altered over the years as many homes have been. So I have no other questions. I, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I, Attorney, I have one, oh, I guess it's one question or it might devolve into something else, but if we can go back to the point made earlier about the size of the dormer, the the fact that it was only a foot in from either side of the roof. And, and then it could go up to, if it was three and a half feet, it might be less of a discussion here. And then with respect to code on the interior with the changes that were proposed, is it your opinion, do you have an opinion on whether there is anything other than one foot, between one foot and three and a half feet in on either side that would result in meeting code of some kind? Maybe not exactly how your client would want it, but it would be acceptable to code.
So I know the three and a half feet wouldn't work. And it might be that a foot and a half to two feet would work, but we would have to check with the structural engineer on that.
Right.
Um, so the, the answer is it might be, and if the board is inclined to have, give this further consideration, we would have, be happy to go back and have that review and come back, but I would want to make sure that it was done such that it would be fruitful in the end, if you will.
Understood, yeah. I think that's the only question I have for now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I, can I jump in and ask that other question?
I said you could. I wouldn't go back on my word.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Mead, just sort of, I think, asking the question that I think has been danced around a little bit. There's going to be a dormer on this roof regardless. Correct?
Um, I, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Delisle. You mean if there's because I don't, I don't know how the redesign would happen such that it would be able to meet her requirements as well as meet the code requirements, I mean, the code requirements as well as having Jennifer sign off on it. So the answer is she wants the living space and she's trying to do it in a most the most tasteful, consistent way possible. And so I can't answer that except for to say that probably.
Okay. No, and I, I I appreciate the delicate nature in which you you answered that. So, thank you. I think that, you know, that understanding that is helpful in terms of sort of framing things, I think. So, thank you for that, for answering that question.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from board members before we close that and go to deliberation?
Mr. Chair, before you close and go to deliberations, or maybe you do it in deliberations, I would like to hear the feedback on, from the board relative to attempting to go in slightly more, but maybe obviously not the three, six, and whether that would be a fruitful exercise.
I appreciate that comment and I think we can work that into our deliberative portion. If there's no objection to that with, with board members, but I think that would, that would certainly be something that we could afford a little look in to see what the board was thinking that way. With that said, deliberations will begin and we'll begin with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a really tough one. Maybe the, one of the toughest that I've had in my tenure, based on the historic nature of this house, when it is sort of juxtaposed to what we as a board can deliberate on and look at. And I think that it is especially hard knowing that there is some size of a dormer that could be put onto this house by right. And I think that that puts us in a position where where the where what we're, what we're doing is looking at, at the ordinance as we can apply it. And it's, it's just, it's a difficult position that we, I think that we as a board find ourselves in. I think that it would be, it would be helpful to see a rendering of a, of a smaller dormer or drawings of a smaller dormer, I think. But this is just, this is a difficult, a difficult question to have to answer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Mr. Swanton?
Yeah, I agree. This is a hard one. I mean, we've seen dormers come and go and we've approved dormers before. What makes this hard is this house is so rare. We heard tonight it's one of documented to be one of the 10 oldest houses in the Commonwealth, which I suspect, given how early Massachusetts was heavily settled and how many of our houses are still here, probably makes it one of the oldest documented houses in the country. Um, and it's survived all these years with a, in its structure. Uh, and we've heard a pretty big outpouring here from the historic community about, you know, about this dormer. We have this ordinance which is causing us to, which caused the zoning enforcement officer to flag this dormer as being too big and that we needed to look at and, and grant a special permit that it was, you know, not being detrimental to the neighborhood, but a huge part of, I mean, new reports come, one of the largest historic districts in the state. It's historic district and its houses are a huge part of what makes the city attractive, gives us its character, makes it valuable. And to take what, what may be the oldest house in town and one of the oldest in the Commonwealth, if not the country, and, and put off oversized dormer on it, I just can't, I mean, you know, I think a lot of historians here would be upset with any dormer, but the reality is she could put a smaller dormer. She just wants to put such a big one, it's been flagged and it's in front of us. You know, I think if we're supposed to turn down an oversized dormer, I can't think of a better instance, quite frankly. If you have one on such an incredibly rare house, and it's not hidden away, it's right there on a major thoroughfare. So I, I, I can't support this oversized dormer, period. I realize you can do a smaller one by right and we wouldn't even be involved. We wouldn't even be here. It would just go to the zoning enforcement office. She wouldn't check the box and it would go off and be built. Uh, and, but I cannot support putting an oversized dormer on this exceptionally rare house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Mr. Chagman?
Yeah, I guess I'm coming at it from the the other direction. I mean, if, if a slightly smaller dormer can be put on this house by right, and we think it might be around six, five and a half to six feet smaller than what's being proposed, possibly. It, it seems to be, you know, a go, no-go, that, you know, a dormer can be put on this house by right. The fact that it might be five feet smaller than what's being proposed to me is is of little or no consequence. It's, you know, if this this historical house should not have a dormer on it, it should not have a dormer on it. If it can by right, then I'm okay with the size as proposed. I, I, I wouldn't I wouldn't be able to, you know, find a way to say that, you know, a smaller one would be okay, but this size is just too big. It almost seems to come down to if, if we really felt it shouldn't go on the house, there should be other means to prevent it from being you know, going through our, our, our system of approvals. But I can approve it as is. I can stand by that. I guess I'm coming at it from a different direction.
Oh, well and good. Thank you, Mr. Chagman. Mr. Bennet?
Yes. I would agree with my colleagues that this is a challenging application for us to wrangle with. I have a number of observations. First, I am mindful of a strong feeling in the communicate, community regarding the historic nature of this structure and the importance of our historical structures to the community as a whole. Second, I note that there are a number of letters in the file supporting this proposal. So I, I don't think I can say, or we can honestly say that there is a ground swell of objection to this when numerous abutters and neighbors support this project. Secondly, I think our major issue here is that the legal criteria that we are bound to apply here do not mention factors such as historic value. So of course we have to then fall back on the criteria as stated in the zoning ordinance. And I find that when I match this proposal with the criteria in the zoning ordinance that we're bound to apply, I believe that this application meets those criteria. And thirdly, although we do have this historic structure, I, I may be I may be a pariah here, but I, I, I don't view it, given the changes that has been made to it, as having such compelling historical value that I would be prepared to turn my back on the criteria that we're bound to follow here. If the, the city intends to protect homes of this ilk, then there are other ways to do it. And I fear that we don't have that jurisdiction here explicitly to deny this based upon the perceived historic nature of the building. So all that being said, I find that the criteria for special permit for non-conformities is met here, albeit in a fashion which creates controversy in the community, but that's my view and that's how I would vote.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And I guess I, I fall into the category of several of my colleagues where this is not a, there's no way a dormer can be built here, so why are we even doing this? That's not the case. I mean, a dormer can be approved, a dormer could be built within certain specifications. So it's not a go or a no-go on dormer in my mind. So if that's the case, it becomes, you know, more detrimental to the neighborhood as far as you're looking at special permit, non-conformity thing. Validation and size, scale and massing, I compared to others in the neighborhood, I'd have a hard time doing that. And again, we, as some colleagues have said, we don't have size, scale and massing compared to the historical value of a of a first period home like this. So I think there's some, there, there might be some value in looking at bringing in the sides a little, but then after looking at the the structure today, I'm not sure, given the size of the entire roof, that it, it wouldn't be better to be more symmetrical and be larger, but from, I can support it. I support it as is. It seems like there's some, some room maybe to come in a little bit, if that's holding up the board on some. It seems to me that we have, you know, some support for this. I mean, well, we know we have some support for this. Is there anyone that feels they couldn't support a dormer in any way? Just trying to get some feedback to the applicant? Is there anyone that doesn't think they could support a dormer in any way? I guess that's the question.
Yeah, I mean, let me comment, Ken Swanton. I mean, I, I think the applicant can by right put a smaller dormer on. It's really nothing, it doesn't require a special permit. It's not something we would even be involved with. Whether or not I support it is kind of moot. I mean, a smaller dormer can be put on. The only reason this is here is because it's such a large dormer. That's really the only question. So, you know, would I be okay with putting a smaller dormer on? Sure, fine, but it's not up to me anyway. It could be done by right.
Fair enough. Anyone else have any further deliberations, any further comment? All right, hearing no further deliberations, we close that part and we'll move to a vote. Unless the applicant has heard anything that would maybe move you to to reconsider the size of, of the dormer, I guess, just to
Well, I guess, I, I get, I'm, I'm pretty clear where Mr. Bennet and Mr. Chagman and you stand as well as Mr. Swanton and I'm not really clear if Mr. Delisle would like to see something a little bit smaller to see if that, that can happen at all, or if he's more in the Mr. Swanton camp as opposed to the Mr. Bennet and Mr. Chagman camp, just trying to understand that.
Yeah, that's a fair, that's a fair question. I think that unfortunately, where I am on this is that despite the the unique nature of, of this historic home, we are under a zoning regime where, you know, under certain, certain circumstances, the, the applicant can do this as as she sees fit by right. And I think that that sort of that sort of seals the deal in a, in a sense where you're going to have a dormer on this roof if the applicant wants to have a dormer on the roof. So to answer your question, Attorney Mead, I think that echoing what Mr. Bennet said, we, we have to apply the, the ordinance and is it more detrimental to the neighborhood at three feet off the side? Or one foot off the side or seven feet off each side? I think they're all probably detrimental to the neighborhood. In the same, in the same way. So I think that's a long way around the barn. For saying that I, I guess, I just, I, I just, I don't think I can support this. I I guess, I just, I I just, I don't think I can support this. I just. So that that's that's where I am on this. I just, I can't, I can't support this.
So I appreciate the candor, Mr. Delisle, and I want, I just want to back up a minute and say. Regardless of. The regardless of the inset and size, just to confirm.
Correct, yes.
I think that what I'd like to do at this point is continue this so that I, given the situation that we're in, it's very awkward to not be able to have a direct conversation with. A client at this point in a meeting, so. With. The generosity of the board, I'd like to continue it. So that I can have an opportunity to have a conversation about next steps with the client.
Understood. Is there a meeting you have in mind or?
I think you're booked on the on the eighth, so it would be the meeting after that.
Could Caitlin or Andy help me with that one? I don't know what the meeting after that is.
June twenty second.
Thank you. Yep. June twenty second meeting, okay. All right, so we have requests from applicants to continue this to our June twenty second meeting. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Shagnon, I'll make a motion to. Push this off until the June twenty second meeting, and this is to Neptune Neptune Street Special Permit for Nonconformities. Twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six.
We have a motion made, waiting for a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Delisle.
All right, a motion made by Mr. Chad and second by Mr. Delisle to continue this matter to the meeting in June twenty-second. Go to a vote, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagman.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
And Mr. Moore, yes. Only affirmative matters continued to the meeting on the twenty-second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final application to be considered tonight. Is for twenty-two twenty-four Auburn Street Lot Two, Simes Development and Permitting LLC. It's application number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight. A special permit to allow for two-family dwelling or use one oh two. The existing property is bound by Auburn Street and and Route One. The applicant proposes to demolish the existing two-family historic structure, split the existing lot into two conforming lots. Build a conforming single-family structure on Lot One and build a two-family structure on Lot Two. To move forward with the redevelopment on the site, the applicant needs a special permit for the two-family use for the structure on Lot Two. With that said. Might we hear from the applicant? Should be Mr. Williams?
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. Yes, my name is Rich Williams with Williams and Sprouges with the Civil Engineers on the project. And also on the line tonight are Jeff Ruda from Simes Development and Permitting. As well as Cole Simes, who is going to be managing the the field aspects of this project. And just to give some background on this project, it's twenty-two to twenty-four Auburn Street. This. Was when the applicant purchased it, one parcel, thirty-four thousand square feet. They have since purchasing it subdivided the property into two lots. Lots one and two, lot one is a single-family project and Lot Two is the lot that we're here. To discuss tonight, and that that lot meets the dimensional requirements for a two-family dwelling. There, there was an existing house, or there is an existing house on the property. Which is situated down, you know, the the property is like a long triangle and it's in the more remote end of the triangle towards Newburyport Turnpike. And that it's corner with Auburn Street that. That house is planned to be demolished. It has gone before the Historical Commission, and at that time, it was determined that it was not. Of historic significance and. They waived the demolition delay the houses, I think circa nineteen thirty-eight, but again, it was deemed not of historic significance. Yes, thank you. Yeah, you can see it's a multi-gambrel roof. With kind of a hodgepodge of added decks and and entryways and and entrances. The property also back in two thousand and eleven was had permits to build. Five units, received the special permit. The owner at the time chose not to go forward. It signs development to purchase that again to make two lots. One single-family and one multifamily. The Lot Two, I'm gonna, I'll just talk about Lot Two. It meets the dimensional standards for a two-family lot. The front setback is the 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 house adjacent to it. On the right, as you say, Auburn Street is three feet or so from Auburn Street. And the proposed house that is going to the left of it will be set back twenty feet, so the average of those two. Creates a minimum front setback of around eleven feet. And we're proposing to have a the minimum of eighteen feet so that we can. Fit a drive-in garage and parking in front of it, so. Meet the front setback, meet the side setbacks and the rear setback, the. Lot coverage is a maximum of thirty. We've got twenty-two percent and. The open space requirement is. Seventy, I'm sorry, thirty-five percent, and we're providing seventy percent, so. We fall well within the requirements of. Of the zoning. The. Yeah, each unit will be provided, again, as I said, with a a drive-in garage. And two spaces in front of it, providing four spaces for each, for each unit. And. While we've got the landscape plan up, I'll talk about the landscaping a little bit, the. The home is proposed to be landscaped with typical shrubs and plantings in the in the front of the house. There's there's one tree. In the front right corner. We've also got a row of arborvitaries on the the right-hand side. As well as on the left-hand side to provide privacy between the homes to the right and to the left. Adding some landscaping adjacent to Route One. But also a fence to provide privacy from that. From that traveled way. If we could flip to the architectural sheet. Yeah, you can see the the front of the house. You can see the two garage entrances. Each unit will have a covered entry. There are multiple gable roofs on the front. It's it's a very attractive. Structure and. The at the rear of the house, there'll be. A landing and steps out to a patio for for each unit. I'm gonna take you through the. My memo on on how we feel like this this meets the bylaw. The uses listed in the Table of Use Regulations. Requiring a permit in the R three district for a two-family. That's why we're there. The requested use is essential and or desirable to the public as it provides needed housing. We feel like this. The the current house that's that's on the project, on the property is a two-family. And with the addition of this two-family and the one other. The one other single-family structure, we're only adding one unit to this area and. The street frontage can definitely withstand an additional unit there. Actually. Constructing these these units kind of provides some flow along Auburn Street looking in that direction. This, the use won't overload any any of the public utilities. The there's plenty of water and sewer capacity in Auburn Street, and again, we're only adding one unit, which is. Very non-intuitive to the utilities. The residential use is in harmony with the purposes and intent of this ordinance. It's residence in the residential zone, and we will not be. Admitting any dangerous noxious injuries or other. Hazardous. Has hazardous materials, be consistent with other residences in the area. And I think with that, I'll open up to. Questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams, and we will now go to public, close that portion, go to public comment. If there is anyone that would like to speak. Please raise your hand electronically and be recognized and remember name and address clearly and unmute. Seeing the low number of participants left, I'm not sure how many will be raising hand right now.
Don't appear to be any takers, Chair.
Going once. Going twice. All right, we'll close public comment. If someone is, you know, the next few minutes realize that they need to hit the raised hand, please do so. And we'll reconsider. Other comments are closed. We now go to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I have no questions regarding this. I mean, we are here for a special permit for two-family use, and we've run through the criteria, so I really don't have any questions.
Understood. Go to Mr. Swan.
Yeah, I too, this looks pretty straightforward. I I don't have any, I guess I have one question, which is on the sidewalk out front. There's a kind of a thin little sidewalk that heads down toward these buildings, and I assume as part of this, we you'd be extending that down the street.
That's correct. We'll be reconstructing that sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, some of it appears to sort of be there, but it it so would that would be a new concrete sidewalk or what?
Yes, that's correct. New concrete sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
Thank you, Mr. Swan and Mr. Chagman.
I I just had one question, Chair. What type of screening are you placing between these homes and Route One? I I. Assume Route One is quite noisy. It looked like a fence, but it is. I I it doesn't look like you've got a, you know, what I'd call a full screen of trees. Is the fence meant to be your your noise barrier?
Yeah, the fence is an eight-foot fence, so it is it is fairly tall, and then we're adding, there are some. A few trees there and and between the trees, we're adding green giant arborvitaries, which get very large. We expect them to create. A pretty heavy screen. In addition to the other minor plantings that are proposed there.
And is the fence solid? Is it like a solid PVC fence?
I'm not sure if it's going to be PVC or wood, but it would be solid, correct.
Okay. No other questions, Chair. Good, good proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chad and Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I just have one question. I just wanted to confirm on the sidewalk that. We talked about replacing the sidewalk. Is there going to be a full replacement of sidewalk concrete for the entire project?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that that was correct, and that's the only question I have. So we'll close questions from the board and go on to. Deliberation, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that the the applicant has had ran us through the the nine factors for two-family use. So I think that that's sufficiently in the record. And with that. I can I can support this application.
Very good, Mr. Swan.
Yes, I think my colleague just said it well. I too can support this application.
Excellent, Mr. Chagman.
Agreed. I I can also support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet.
I agree with my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Bennet. And to use the term this old people use a ditto. Yes, I would agree that. With my colleagues had taken support this for the. The applicant has exemplified the nine points needed for special permit findings for two-family use. I am fine with with moving forward with this project, so at this point, we'll close deliberations and look for a motion.
Chair, this is Andy Port. Can I?
Yes.
Just ask a question for clarification.
Yeah.
Perhaps just again, for the purposes of drafting the decision.
Yeah.
Again, with the assumption the board is is likely to approve, I would assume, but if the board is approving and the applicant has spoken about the sidewalk, and again, just to clarify. Looking at the, this isn't a present-day photo, but a street view of it. The applicant indicated obviously the expectation of a new concrete sidewalk in front of the the two-family use. There are two two structures here, obviously, going in, and there's a like the sidewalk that goes longer than the frontage in front of the two-family lot. Just wanted to clarify, is the applicant proposing to construct the sidewalk for the whole length down to the intersection there? Or is it only in front of the two-family lot itself?
No, the intention is to construct the sidewalk along the entire frontage.
Okay, and thank you for clarifying applicant. And then the reason I asked that question is it would perhaps make sense to clarify that if the board is approving in the red decision, just so that there isn't. Confusion as to whether or not that frontage or the sidewalk is is just in this location here versus the whole length.
Entire frontage of the of the. Two lots.
Right, right. Again, just so that there's clarity in the field, how far that's going, yeah.
Yep, so noted, and. And I believe the draft motion, there's some other things included that I'm sure will be mentioned by. By someone making a motion to approve. I assume that's coming. So do we have a motion?
Mr. Delisle, I'll make the motion to approve the special permit for twenty-two to twenty-four Auburn Street. File number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight with the conditions that. Number one, the tree commission's chairs recommendation is implemented in coordination with the Department of Public Services. Prior to the grant of an occupancy permit for the structure and. Number two, that the existing sidewalk at the frontage of, I think we just said. The entire frontage of the two lots shall be replaced with a. Brick or concrete sidewalk in coordination with the DPS and in accordance with the specifications issued by DPS. Prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit for the project, the work must be completed or a permit and. Or a permit and schedule for completion issued in writing.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
Motion may be Mr. Delile with condition, second by Mr. Swanton for approval. Of twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight. I'll go to a vote now. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Chagman.
Yes.
Mr. Bennet.
Yes.
Mr. Moore. Oh, yeah, it's me. Yes, all in the affirmative. Application is approved, special permit for two-family use.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good night with. Good night. Have a good night. Thanks for your patience. That concludes. The the application process for this evening, we now move on to in the public hearings. We now close that portion, move on to the business meeting, starting with the approval of the minutes from the five eleven twenty one meeting. Are there any? Comments, changes suggested by any of the board?
I I have one on page five. There's a little paragraph that starts Mr. Santos. Well, he says the discussion taking place. In only about windows, I think it should be is only about windows to just change into is. But that's all I have.
Duly noted. Does anyone else have any changes to mention to the minutes from last meeting? Hearing none, we'll look for a motion to approve with the changes to page five.
Yeah, this is Ken Swat. I I move we approve the minutes as amended.
Bud Shagnon second.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended by Mr. Swanton, second of Mr. Chagrin. We'll go to a vote. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagrin?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore says yes as well. Motion, the minutes are approved unanimously. So now we move to the last portion of this meeting. We'll get an update. From moderator. Or keeper of the, say keeper of the. Proposals here, Mr. Port.
Sure, thank you. And I I appreciate the late hour and I'm sure that you members don't necessarily want to hear me for another hour, which is, I think, is apparently the amount of time it took me to explain. The proposed draft amendment to the planning board the other night. So out of respect for you board members and your volunteer time. I'll give a sort of a crib sheet version, a short version of the summary, and then I'm happy to elaborate, but. We obviously wanted to do the same thing for the zoning board of appeals collectively. As we did for the planning board members, which is to summarize, what is seventeen page update to the zoning ordinance? It's essentially package one of several we'd like to do this year to update. Various different areas of the ordinances, the zoning ordinances, some pieces of which are out of date, some of which are involve language changes. So while all members have a copy of the seventeen page amendment, which implicates several different sections of the ordinance. Probably the easier way to look at all that and kind of boil it all down for summary purposes. Is actually to look at the the legal notice itself, which is also posted on the website. And what you would see in there is is a summary of of the edits themselves. Again, this is just a summary. I happen to go line by line, but I thought there are a couple of places off of this that are worth worth noting for your purposes. And obviously, since this is one of appeals. As you can see from tonight's agenda, in other words, recently also deals with interpretation and application of the ordinance when there's disputes. So the P, the the primary impetus impetus behind this particular package was to clean up some language issues in the ordinance. That were potentially resulting in some issues of dispute. And so most of it, I think, focuses on that. Some of it is to clarify some language and clean up some little loose ends. So the the things that I would mention are just substantive things, really, and I'm happy to go over in more detail if anybody wants, but. Underneath number two here that you see on this list from the ad is. In that, number two is basically putting in clarifying language in the ordinance, and I feel that this particular amendment is important because several years ago. The city council adopted amendment in the agricultural conservation zoning district, which is a substantial portion of the city that is on our zoning map is green. It's outlying areas that are not densely developed and ones that we want to preserve for various different reasons, including agricultural purposes. And can and your continued preservation of those areas is open space. And so this would put a clarifying rationale for that. And the reason that I think that's important is. Even though I think the council's decision to upzone or downzone, I should say, the area to larger lot sizes should be upheld. I think the courts would have an easier time defending that. Given the the mishmash of Massachusetts case law, if it's clarified that the reason for having larger lots in that area. Is if it's not obvious is because we want to preserve the ability at least to have farmland in that area. And if you have a small lot sizes carved up into single family house lots or smaller. You know, then you don't really have anything to work with. So so that's kind of the the rationale that's put in there. I think that's important. As a, it's not a change to the dimension requirement, but it's a clarification of what that dimension requirement is and why we have it. So should there be any litigation? We've had a couple of folks recently express developers express concerns that they just don't like the fact that there's a large lot size requirement in that district. It's one that I think does make sense for the reasons stated. The other, some of the things I would note is underneath number six is just clarifying that. There's awnings that are allowed in the city, however, as clarification that we're not talking about the downtown overlay district where the planning board has some jurisdiction to look at. Architectural features and staff law review may happen and for certain features like that, but outside the downtown district awnings are typically allowed. In the number nine, this is a new provision addressing submission of complete applications. And this is, again, I just wanted explicit language in the ordinance. Making it clear if it, I would sure appreciate, sure board members would appreciate this, but. That we do not consider the clock running on an I, an application that comes in the door until it's complete with all forms, all attachments, all drawings. That are required. So the clock is not ticking and staff and board members are not wasting time on something that's that's half big. So, you know, given occasionally folks looking for little loopholes and things like that, just making it very clear that the form is put put forth by this office. Working in coordination of the boards are the submission requirements and any, you know, checklist that are on there need to be followed as well. There are some updates to underneath second under number ten, there's some updates to the special permits. To comply with the zoning act. For instance, we went from a two year permit for special permit to three years. It's consistent with the state law now. We. There's a underneath number eleven, there's a peer review provision in the ordinance, looking at if someone has something that. For any reason, a city official believes that there's a violation of performance standards like noise and. Smoke and things like that, that there could be a sort of a peer review of that. I haven't seen that provision used, I think, but but we just updating some language in there. The number twelve, there's some provisions that we're changing or just language updating relative to adoption and amendment of zoning ordinances. Our process has been pretty routine over the years where the planning board and city council hold joint hearings. On those amendments, but there are several different ways that ordinance zoning ordinance amendments can initiate. And this section speaks to that and the process involved. And again, just some housekeeping updates in that section. And then. In thirteen and fourteen, we delete two sections of the ordinance that are no longer needed. They're basically special overlay districts that were adopted years ago to. Allow a specific type of redevelopment of of a sort of a complex of of area. And in both of those instances, those projects have been built. And so it makes sense at this point to allow. Any modifications of those projects to be underneath those original permits as modifications. Or folks getting special permits for non conformity, you know, beyond that, rather than having to keep a whole section of the ordinance that is really. Sensibly never going to be used in that way. So our ordinance has ballooned over the years. As you can imagine, it's gone from a shorter document, you know, decades ago to something quite long today with various different complicated provisions. Fifteen, we updated some procedural things. So in this is in the downtown overlay district, so we're allowing. Structure to to be moved. This is again by special permit, so it's discretionary, but at least allows the mechanism for the board to consider the moving of a structure. We clarified that the board, in this case, the planning board, their jurisdiction as special permit granting authority in the downtown overlay district. Even where the zoning board repeals might typically act in that capacity, the planning board has those special permits. Excuse me, the there's, I I wanted to clarify in there that the board can call upon a peer reviewer at any time. For the work involved, rather than just in ten days from the opening of the hearing, which seemed a little bit of a tight timeframe. So so we've expanded that to make it clear that the board can call up on for peer review services at any time it needs to during the hearing process. Again, there's lots of housekeeping sort of language tweaks, but nothing that I think is substantially worth bringing out here unless you want to discuss further. In, I think notable for your purposes and something you might want to take a look at, you know, and and provide feedback to us if you want to, you know, before the council takes action on this, which wouldn't be. Really until June, I think, you know, sometime in mid to late June, but. At the earliest would be number sixteen, which. No, I should note, by the way, side number seventeen is really just dealing with what is needed to support an application. Again, it's sort of same kind of issue we talked about. Earlier, which is making sure that applications are are complete. So for instance, the building commissioner and zoning administrator, for instance, among, you know, in addition to the boards may want scale drawings. Diagrams, calculations to show that something is under a certain threshold, for instance, rather than. Relying upon sort of the mishmash of information that we've seen accepted over the years. You know, in decades or years past. But sixteen, I think, is important mainly because this board typically deals with the downtown overlay or the demolition control overlay district. And and so this section here is is addressing some things, and I think it speaks to. You may recall from some prior applications that the boards dealt with. In recent time that KP law opined relative to what considered what's considered demolition. And what triggers that ordinance. And so, for instance, I didn't wasn't necessarily going to go into this in great detail, but there is a diagram. That the zoning administrator has put together to help to illustrate for folks. And again, this is something that will be refined for. Illustration for the general public and for applicants and so forth. But this is, the diagram is essentially meant to illustrate what types of things when someone's altering a an exterior facade, what might be triggered. As areas of demolition and in that ordinance, obviously, the twenty five percent threshold that you're familiar with or the one side that you're familiar with. That, you know, this is essentially meant to clarify some of that. So there is some language in that section. That helps to clarify that. I wasn't going to go, you know, word by word, but I do think, for instance, a couple of things of note, for instance. That it says that the new language clarifies, consistent with KP law's interpretation of the ordinance as it is applied today. This language that we're posing is essentially put there to. Clarify with explicit language in the ordinance, what is called for, rather than leaving it to essentially a legal interpretation or one that is disputed in court later on. To have explicit language in the ordinance about what is intended here, again, consistent with the KP law opinion. That came in this case relative to the Hancock Street application. So here it says, for instance, dissimulally, the mere replacement of existing windows and external doors. Without the alteration of their overall dimensions shall not be considered for demolition for the purposes of this ordinance. Again, keep consider that that's the replacement of those items, not filling in the door or a window. The, if you, if we were to go down further, for instance. For the purposes of calculating the total area of external walls involved in proposed demolition, such areas shall include. Any elimination or relocation of any existing window openings, i.e. filled in with wall area. And any wall area which will be hidden from exterior view, but prime proposed additions. And so for those of you who might recall the Hancock Street application. We had originally seen as a plan that would have surrounded the structure and arguably, you know, essentially demolished the exterior walls because they're no longer exterior walls. And so in that that application of that that set of plans was revised for that particular property, but. It brought into clearer focus the fact that this ordinance. Does not allow someone to do that without counting that as part of the demolition that that is the threshold of its ordinance. So. In in any way, I just wanted to note that that is one I think that will be particularly useful to this board. And certainly to the zoning administrator, as we try to clarify with explicit language, the ordinance, some nuances, it may not be as. Readily understood by the average person, the layperson reading the ordinance. Certainly attorneys should be able to interpret what's required by the ordinance in those areas, but. But the order that it is a complicated ordinance and one that I think needs some additional language to make it explicitly clear. Where the thresholds are. And so that's why we're proposing this additional language. Beyond that, I guess I would defer if there's any questions on the package, but our hope is that we have discussed, you know, a couple of tweaks to language in there with a few folks. The chair and vice chair of the planning board, and we'll see what comments come from council members and planning board members and others. But if you have any. Suggestions or thoughts or concerns, we're happy to take this into account and try to address those, obviously, before the council would take action on this package.
When was that? When would that be?
So the hearing we're having is actually on the second of June. And that will obviously, like any other, you know, planning board meeting, it's a joint meeting of the city council in this case, but it'll be zoomed, so you can watch that meeting if you want. And obviously, after that, we'll be able to let you know, Caitlin and I will be able to let you know. You know, if there's any substantive adjustments that folks are proposing in in the package. My guess is that most of it will be, you know, language. If there's anything, somebody wants to tweak about language, we have discussed a few of those things. Where some slight change of verbiage might be helpful, but other than that, you know, again, it will will adapt any questions or concerns that are raised.
Andy, where where is that package? Just out of curiosity, so we can look at the whole thing.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I apologies if you. If you don't have immediate access to it, my recollection wasn't again, I my mind's a bit scrambled this late hour of the day, but. My recollection was that we had sent that a copy of that out to the board. And again, I can do is re forward forward or re forward that tomorrow if there's any confusion over that, but. We had sent, I think, a PDF, which is the seventeen page amendment. What I might do actually is just send you a link to the webpage where it is posted for the hearing. At that location, you'll be able to see the the hearing that the plane board is having. And the materials itself, so the seventeen page amendment showing clearly the existing language and then the markup on top of that of what's being changed. So it's easier to tell what's being adjusted. And then also the link to the Zoom meeting and and the zoning ad itself, which has that quick sheet cheat cheat summary. So like I said, on the city council or the city website, I can send it like this tomorrow, but. The planning board meeting for June second on that agenda, if you look at the materials there, you'll see the zoning amendment. It's a. In that that page there, you'll see the proposed zoning amendment, which is the seventeen. And then the notice, which is the summary bowl list I just showed. So it's it's there on the website. Apologies if anybody, if for any reason, there's any disconnect there. I thought we had gotten. That out to the board and the whole reason for summarizing it tonight was to sort of recap that, but.
Andy, there's a, you guys, there's a, there's a link in the staff report to all of this at the very end of it.
Right.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin.
And so again, if you have, even aside from a future zoning board of appeals meeting, if you have as individual members, if you have comments regarding this, you want to send us a bowl list or anything. If you send that to Caitlin and I or Caitlin and Jennifer and I, obviously, I think Jennifer is still with us this evening at this late hour. If you can send us those comments, we're happy to take those into account and and decide at that point, you know, whether something is just worth incorporating immediately, or if there's any question, we might circle back with you. But we're happy to take those into account. Again, our goal is to clean up language in the ordinance, make it clear, unambiguous. Makes the zoning administrator's job easier, makes the board's job easier, makes disputes with, you know, the usual suspects easier and. And so that's our first effort here. We'd like to work on some remaining sections after this with the council. Obviously, but we did not want to wait any longer on this package, which dealt with some language issues that come up on a regular basis.
Excellent. All right. So I would think that hopefully if, you know, we. We won't inundate you since we're going to send.
It's only like five emails or six emails tops you get from. Well, seven to three with any comments, suggestions, questions and. In time for a June second meeting, so.
Yeah, thank you. And also, and frankly, you know, that's regarding this particular amendment, but of course, if there's any suggestions for code changes that you think might be beneficial, you know. Obviously, provide them to us at the meeting as, you know, discussion points or or, you know, the emails, of course, we try to, you know, respond to everything and. And when we can roll it into a package, whether it's immediately on this one or, you know, a month from now and in the next one. We'll we'll try to roll them in there. And because we recognize that you as board members. Just like some of the other parties that can initiate zoning changes may feel a need for a a new provision or greater clarity. I know that this board typically focuses on the implementation of the ordinances, you know, as they're written. But I know that Stephen Delisle, for instance, that, you know, press must still look at work a little bit more on one of the pieces that's in this package here, which is the. And or phrasing in the ordinance in one vision. So there's a couple of folks that have been. You know, wrestled with that particular section again, as people look for loopholes and look at, you know, the very fine language and say, well, maybe maybe that and or shouldn't be that written that way. That wasn't the original intention. So our goal here is to have greater clarity. So if you see something that's a little bit ambiguous or not quite clear. This this may be, you know, an example of of the way we can update those things.
Excellent. Well, thanks. Thanks to you and Caitlin and Jennifer for the hard work you're doing. I'm trying to. Continue to scrub this. Ever expanding binder of ordinance or so. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Appreciate it. With that, that can that concludes our our agenda for tonight. And. Would certainly entertain a a motion to adjourn.
Could I just ask one question? This is Ken Swanton. Andy, you. Told us we might be getting a forty B and you told us about a training program and. I've run into these in the past. I'd like to get up to speed if we're, if there's a good chance we're going to see one, if it's remote that we're going to see one, I'd rather not go through the training. Could you just comment, is is it? There's a good chance we're going to have to deal with one, so it'd be smart to get trained.
We we've received the suggestion that someone is interested in pursuing that route. We'll see, it's hard to really know until they actually file something that that's the. We've received the suggestion that someone is interested in pursuing that route. We'll see, it's hard to really know until they actually file something that that's the route they're going to go. But they have expressed interest. Clearly, they've, you know, verbally conveyed to us and suggested that they would like to pursue that route mainly because they're unhappy with the A-Kids requirement in the agricultural conservation district. So I think it's our, it's best practice for us to refresh what our current regs are and and look at the types of the slight differences in the process you would follow for a forty B. Obviously, I'm familiar with that process and we would, you know, assist the board, obviously, with that process. But because the unique situation with forty Bs, which this board hasn't seen in, you know, a decade or more is because because you you act as the board of relief for all the local permits that would otherwise be required generally is for land use permits. You know, something that might be required on the local wetlands ordinance, something that might be required by the planning board as a special permit, for instance. You know, variances and, you know, those things, all those things would come to this board as a part of a so-called comprehensive permit. And so because this board is looking at that, you know, Jennifer and I've discussed this, if we do get a filing under forty B, we would provide guidance, obviously, about how that process goes beyond this training. But I think this training is helpful because it's something that's relatively cheap. It's available online. And it provides a good overview of how the process works. We would essentially provide guidance to the board, identifying where relief was needed for a particular project and the types of waivers, they're called waivers in this case, would need to be granted. But some, a lot of these projects that are forty Bs are looking for relief under zoning and essentially, the the argument under under the forty B statute is that affordable housing, and we can debate over what the definition of affordable housing and whether or not it is affordable, but affordable housing is a is a serious need in Massachusetts. And so the assumption there legislatively is that that takes priority. And so there might need to be some overriding of local zoning in order to accomplish that. In this case, the creation of twenty-five percent of those units in a project or more as affordable. So in this instance, if the developer does take that route because they're unhappy with the density that they can get, tries to go a forty B route and says, you know, I can create some affordable units and thereby potentially override some local zoning provisions. And again, that'll be their effort. We have the city's best interest to protect. So that means, you know, protection of the water supply and and things like that. But there's also considerations of, you know, potentially inappropriate development patterns or overdevelopment of inappropriate areas. So so we'll provide guidance to the board, like I said, you know, when you get an application. But this overview would give the board members themselves a little bit of an overview or a pressure of how the forty B process works. It's a little bit, little bit parallel to the what you look at when you look at a special permit or variance, but but it's a little bit different because in this case, you're serving as the one board for all local permits and deciding whether or not to grant waivers from those things. Because there's a presumption that the relief will generally be granted if it encourages the affordable housing and does not have any, what I will describe as, you know, core public health and safety issues. The assumption is under the statute generally, and the case law relative to it, is that generally speaking, the the local regulations will be waived to the extent that it accomplishes the affordable housing project.
Yeah, I mean, Andy, I understand it, how it works in general. I'm just trying to figure out if this is likely enough, we should bother to sign up. Sounds like it is, and we should sign up. So that's really all I'm looking for. So.
Oh, yeah, sorry. It's hard to predict, but I would say it's worthwhile at this point, given that someone has directly said I'd like to pursue that route in the near term or, you know, so it's hard for us to know. But if they're truthful in what they're saying, I would say by the end of the year, you might get some from them, right? So it's worth us refreshing now.
Is this our only chance before the end of the year to get trained?
No, I so again, we could, we could do a recap of this at a later point. We can work with the actual entity that's doing this to have them come back and do one specifically for us. Or otherwise, it's just that this one happens to not be a biddany, just a cost to us to do because it's just the one-time registration for each member. And if we have them come for us specifically, we might have spent a couple hundred dollars, at least to just have them come here. But yes, we would certainly effort to have an overview done regardless of whether this session is available at a later date. We would, you know, make it accessible to you, the PowerPoints, slides, whatever, but also have them come back and then do an overview, I think, if we were to get a filing.
Thank you.
Any other issues anyone wants, anyone wants to present as I mumble my way through the late night here?
I move we adjourn.
All righty, we have a motion to adjourn. Seconded, I will go by, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. The ayes have it. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.